I'd like to call our board meeting to order. We'll begin this evening. So great to see you all here. Thank you for making time to join us this evening. We will begin by establishing a quorum. So I'm going to call everyone's name for Vol Call Vote. Joe.
Here.
Corby.
Here.
John.
Here.
Meredith.
Here.
And I am here as well. We do have a quorum. Corby, has this meeting been properly noticed?
It has.
Thank you. To help ensure that we're centering our board work around our shared values in serving our students, we begin each of our board meetings by reading the district's Equity Framework and the Ho-Chunk Land Acknowledgement, which can be found at the top of your agenda. Joe, would you be willing to read those for us this evening?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
The VASD Educational Equity Framework is, "In the Verona area school district, our mission is that each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. To meet this mission, the Verona area school district will ensure that every individual has access to the educational, social, and emotional support they need to feel valued and affirmed in their unique identities and experiences. We acknowledge that inequities in power dynamics exist in our system such that some individuals, on the basis of their identities, face barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. In acknowledgement of such, the Verona area school district is committed to disrupting these systems of inequity." And the Ho-Chunk Land Acknowledgement is, "There are currently 12 tribal nations who call Wisconsin home, with the Ho-Chunk nation being the primary group living around Madison. No matter where you are in the state, you are on the ancestral land of a tribal nation. As we begin our meeting, we honor the land upon which we stand."
Thank you, Joe. Are there any questions or comments about the remainder of the agenda? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda. So, thanks, Meredith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second with Joe, right? That was Joe? I think so. All in favor of approving tonight's agenda signify with aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Tonight's agenda has been adopted. Our first significant agenda item is student recognition for our superintendent's Student Advisory Council members. I'm super excited to have you all here and some of your families as well. We want to share as a board our gratitude for the work you put in because we know what that means for Dr. Clarity and his team. We're so appreciative that your feedback as students makes the way to the board table as well. So thank you for your time. And I'll hand it over to you, Dr. Clarity.
All right. So, good afternoon, everybody, or good evening now. And thank you so much for joining us today. You've probably got the best seat in the house because you get to see in front of you the amazing group of students that really support in such a dynamic fashion the work that I do as superintendent. When we think about this from three years ago, and it's been three years already since this journey began with this leadership team, and we were committed to centering voices of those that we serve through the advisory methods. And so we have three advisories. We have a staff advisory, a family parent advisory, and we also have a student advisory. And today, we're here to recognize the brilliance of our students. And not just in reward, but I just wanted to talk to you briefly about some of the amazing information that they've given us that informed significant moves across our district. When we had issues and talked about the security and safety of our single-stall bathrooms, across the secondary especially, our student advisory were the ones that really provided us an in-depth look at what that needed to be adjusted to inform our Board of Education and myself and our leaders on the adjustments that needed to be made. They looked at our communication. They gave some very good and sometimes critical feedback, which we want, on what that should be. And we adjusted that feedback based off of their knowledge and skill. When we think about our priority areas of our strategic framework, especially the equity framework, that was informed by our student advisory. As we think about those that we serve, we must prioritize and elevate their voices in ensuring that our priorities match their needs. Our communication strategies. We came before our team and talked about the way that we recognize and sometimes I had to accept that there could possibly be an age difference between the way I received communication and the way our students want to receive communication. Even though my own children have been telling me that for years, you know, that's, you know, it really came to light as we talked about our communication strategies. Course selections. They really informed the courses that they desire to have and need and to make sure that they thrive in the most diverse global society that has ever existed. And finally, our student surveys. Our student surveys, they provide significant feedback, not just in the surveys that we currently do, but hey, we need to maybe rethink our surveys and make sure that you're asking me about my experiences, not my perceived experience of someone else. Because those are two distinctly different answers. And so when we think about all those things, and I just named a few, that's why our advisory is so crucial to what we do. We have three locations. We have a high school advisory. We have a Badger Ridge Core Knowledge advisory. And we have a Savannah Oaks advisory. And so before I go a little bit more, I'm honored to have one of our leaders and next year's president of our advisories, Ms. Sidney Moore. She's going to come and just talk to you briefly about the work of advisories. And congratulations on your presidency. I already tell you we're president.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sidney. I'm a sophomore, and I've been in the Superintendent's Student Advisory for about three years now. We meet once a month and talk about things going on in our district and specifically the high school. We have deep and meaningful conversations about the things we want to see changed, advice for the school, or things that we think our schools can work on. Having a group like this is essential because it makes sure that students are involved in decision-making and problem-solving throughout our school and district. Because ultimately, the decisions that are made affect us the most, so we should be part of the decision-making process. I think I speak for all of us when I say that in that space, we have the freedom and the comfortability to be honest about the goods and the bads. And no matter what we're talking about in this space, each of our voices are truly listened to, heard, and taken into consideration. I love our group and always support our meetings. And I'm really grateful that we have the Student Advisory Council. I'm very glad that I get to be a part of it.
Thank you, Sidney. And I think I saw Ms. Akadaka coming in. There you are. How are you?
I'm good.
Yeah, good. Ms. Akadaka will be representing Savannah Oaks and talking about their experience with the advisory.
Being in student leadership for your PEZ band was one of the most inspiring experiences of my life so far. It has taught me to be an advocate for those who can't. It has shown me that no matter how old you are, you can make a difference. And it has helped me have a sense of purpose. One of the biggest joys in being in a group like this is helping everyone see how much they can do to make a difference. It is an amazing honor to outwardly get to represent those who see things... Sorry. It is an amazing honor to outwardly get to represent the students at my school who see things that need change and then to make those changes. During my time as a member in the Superintendent Advisory Committee, I have witnessed firsthand incredible changes being made to the district. From getting to help rewrite our statement of equity to seeing changes in outreach from staff and increasing time spent honoring the many diverse cultures that make up Verona. The pride I feel to be a Wildcat comes from a deep sense of responsibility, respect, and appreciation from this district. From our monthly meetings to getting to spend time with the other middle school and high school groups, I have learned so much about what it means to be a Wildcat. Thank you for this amazing opportunity to help improve our leadership.
That's amazing. Thank you so much. And representing Badger Ridge Core Knowledge, we're going to have Richie Martinez Flores.
Representing our Student Advisory Council is Badger Ridge. We have a lot of students and we have monthly meetings. There are monthly meetings that help our superintendent create a more diverse and including society for our students. And this helps us a lot because it helps us focus and learn harder and motivates us to do better in school. We see a lot of things that need to change. And us, people who represent them, we say that to the superintendent and then we see that change. And that makes us feel like we matter and that they care about us. And it... I don't know. It's good.
So as superintendent, I can't tell you... First, I want to thank the parents and families that give me the honor of being able to serve side by side with your students every... At least once a month, I feel like it's every day because I take so much from the experiences. And to be able to bring it to our board table, to be able to bring it to our leadership team, our principals, to our staff. The things that I talk about in our VAE investment meetings often resonate from the words of our students. And that's really how service leadership is designed to happen. Our goal is service to others and service to our community. And our greatest attribute is that of our students, that we have the honor and privilege to be able to educate and allow it to thrive. So on behalf of our staff, on behalf of our families and on behalf of our Board of Education, thank you for the great honor of being able to work side by side with these amazing leaders. And soon we'll begin an awards presentation just as a symbolism for what they've meant to me personally and what they mean to the entirety of the Verona area school district. Remember, every day is a great day to be a Wildcat. And these students make it such an honor. Thank you again. I'm going to begin with Badger Ridge and Core Knowledge. So, and then when I... I'll call the group up. Please grab, get your certificate and your medal. It's a gold medal because you're all number one in my hearts. If you're a senior, our seniors will also be receiving a rope that they wear as part of their graduation adornment as well. So I'll make sure seniors get those. Just to be aware, we try to schedule things in their spring for... We have choir concerts going today. We have regional track, regional soccer. We have every event imaginable in person. So we know all of our representation cannot be here today, but we'll make sure they get their awards and recognition as well. So beginning with Badger Ridge, we have Easton Jones. Francis Vargas. Lydia Morris. Michael Noe. Michael Modrow. Richie Martinez Flores. Thank you to the Badger Ridge Core Knowledge team. We're here representing the Savannah Oaks team. We're going to do Vol Call all three. We have Claudia Apodaca. Irene Tillis. Where is Irene?
Oh.
Where? Irene Tillis, there you are. How are you doing, buddy? All right, representing our high school team here in attendance will be Anaya Gonzalez. Faith Rush. Jonah Hanson. Gojo Abatsi. Did I say her name? Michaela Kirch. Can I say your name I call you? MJ. Nori Ellenbach. And Sidney Moore. Before I move forward, just want to make sure that, before I got to the list, is there anyone that I missed from the original list that I got? All right, you good? All right. Thank you to our high school team. I'm okay if you wear those medals at school tomorrow. All right, advisory students and parents, we recognize that you may want to stay for a three and a half hour board meeting. But... But if that's not your desire, there's an additional photo opportunity with you on the screen. And Ms. Carn will do a photo as well. I want to quickly and very appropriately recognize our outgoing seniors that will be receiving their cords. And also, one of the priorities to make is that everyone that serves on the Student Advisory also gets a letter of recommendation for their either college or work of choice from me, from the superintendent. And we take care of that with all of our seniors as well because that is a true sign of great leadership that we want to make sure is recognized. So please give a round of applause to our outgoing seniors. Over here, I also want to take an opportunity to just kind of give a shout out to our staff advisory. Our staff advisory are made up of numerous staff from across the Verona area school district. They serve in a similar capacity to our student advisory with enhancing not just the student experience, but they allow me and the Board of Education to do what's so important is make sure that we are providing resources and committed to where the magic happens. The magic happens in our classrooms. You know, it doesn't matter what I do as leader, it doesn't matter what we do. If we don't center and understand the magic of education in our classrooms and the direct impact that our educators have on each student's individual experiences, then we've missed the point as service leaders. And so this group does a phenomenal job of really making sure that our leadership move to come to light, that they inform, allow us to pivot when necessary. And so please give our student staff advisory a round of applause. All right, before we move forward, I am delighted... Actually, delight's not the right word because you're losing great people. I am honored to be able to recognize so many years of service to the Verona area school district and what that has meant for thousands of students that have come in and out of our doors. They continue to maintain a legacy, not with their time here, but as they continue to move forward, what they have met, well, just that trajectory doesn't stop with retirement. We also are delighted that they are at this stage in their life where they can, you know, make those choices and sleep in if they want or whatever those decisions are that be made. So it's definitely both an honor and a bit of excitement for that next stage. And, you know, once you're a Wildcat, you're always a Wildcat. And so we'll know we'll be able to lean on this great group. We have a video recognition that we like to show. And Laurie is going to queue that up for us from the back. Just a overview of all of our staff.
Just to echo some of the gratitudes to our retirees. The retiree list does come across our agenda as board members for approval. And so I think it's equal parts of yes, and I don't want to approve that, actually. Can we just simply say no? Just want to elevate and thank the folks that are on that list, not only for their service across the district, but even myself personally, as an educator in the district for so many years. We are losing amazing knowledge. But I know that the tutelage and mentorship that they've all given to future educators and folks that are remaining will shine through. So thank you to all of you for all of your years of service in VASD.
Thank you. So we're going to begin our psychology, our psychologist presentation. So our students and families, this is if you would like to. This is your chance to escape.
Thank you again for coming.
My name is Tracy Jackson. And I'm here at People Services. I have the privilege of supporting all of the People Services teams. And one of those teams is our amazing site. This is a strong, dynamic team who just leave without much direction, but they... because they're amazing. I trust their work. They do amazing work. And they are going to share a bit of what they do.
So my name is Elizabeth Kramer. And this is my friend and colleague, Emily Cook. And we first wanted to personalize this by showing you all of our pictures. Do I have to run that thing up there? We all have our individual strengths. So this is our fantastic team of school psychologists. We really enjoyed bringing these pictures together. We have a very diverse group. And up there represents a lot of experience. And it's actually... We range from being in the district one to 26 years. So I mean, that's just amazing. And it's a range of 40, or excuse me, four to 30 years of experience in the field. And so I'll just admit that I am the eldest here. But Marlene is at my close second, so we kind of came in in the same era together. And then we have some people like Kristen and Daniel and Hannah. They're in their first, second year of PATTs and her second year. So we have the youngins coming in. And then we have a lot of strong people that are in the middle. And so we have three bilingual psychologists, which is really exciting to have in one district. And I hope that you have met at least one or more of these incredible people. We did try to personalize this. So everyone has put little... We'll highlight them, little posters or sayings or experiences throughout our presentation, so that you can kind of get to know us a little bit. But we're all very unique and individual. So we first want to thank all of you and all of you for really recognizing us as psychologists and all that we can offer the district. We really have a diverse skill set and we have extensive training. So we are required to have an educational specialist or a doctorate in order to practice. And I have been teaching for almost 20 years in Whitewater. This year, I taught the interns who are going out into their first year, next year. And it's absolutely incredible, the amount of coursework and field work that they do as part of that training. So we know that you know that about us as psychologists and are recognizing that. We thank you for recognizing our individual strengths and passions because, like I said, we all are very unique. And then also kind of our flexibility to really personalize our service to the school that we're in. Because we have a lot of expertise and we can do a lot of things, but we can't do it all at once. And so when we move into a school and we get to know the staff and the families and the kids, we do differentiate how we serve our best. And we know that you recognize that about us. And we just really appreciate that. So, thank you.
All right, and here is some of that personalization that Elizabeth had referenced. A special piece of art from one of our students to one of our school psychologists in the district. We often receive little trinkets like this through the years. School psychologists ensure educationally and psychologically healthy environments for all students by implementing research-based, effective programs that prevent problems, enhance independence, and promote optimal learning. So when we talk about environments, we really are even going beyond the educational classroom environment, but to our non-structured settings within a school building and also into the community and working with our families and community members. So it's really important that there is that bridge with the job that we do. And who are we? When we are not giving out cat stickers and helping students, we are a highly qualified group of professionals with graduate degrees, as Elizabeth had noted. And we are a very diverse group of individuals with a variety of passions and life experiences. So it's not just our educational experiences that we have all had individually, but also the life experiences that we're all coming in with to Verona, which makes this group really, really unique. So we all are starting off with that bachelor's degree. It does vary. It's not always a psychology degree. It could be in child development, sociology, or even an education-related field. We also need to make sure that there's some sort of volunteering or practicum internship experience related to that. So we're out in the field getting those experiences. Elizabeth mentioned that we do have psychologists working in our district that have an education specialist background degree or a doctorate. So those are the two different degree areas that we really focus in in Verona. Some psychologists have master's degrees, but we really have moved away from that in recent years. We can also look at that PhD in School or Educational Psychology. So that is another area that some of our school psychologists have experience with. We have a highly developed knowledge and skill set in prevention and intervention services for students and families and that foundation of what services are needed in our school environment. So that's another really important piece of what we do. And just to give you an idea of how varied our job roles are as we get into what we are doing here in the Verona area school district, this is the type of coursework that we go through in our training, whether it's on the prevention and intervention side or the combinations of services needed in the schools. We are more than just testers. We do more than evaluations at school. That is more of a traditional role of a school psychologist, but we actually are assisting with interventions for students, both academic and mental and behavioral health. We are working within the special education department. We also help with any sort of response or preparing and planning for a crisis situation or a threat, risk of threat. We are working with our families, our community organizations, where there's a lot of collaboration happening, as well as the work that we do within cultural competence. We do a lot with data collection. That's another traditional role of, we like data, we do like data, we really do like data. We look at data and analyze that data so that we can make changes to programming for students. We consider risk factors of our population that we work with. We consult all the time. We are stopping in classrooms, in hallways, in the lunchroom. We are always talking with our colleagues on what we can do to make something better. So that consultation piece is very, very strong. We do some research and program evaluation. That is also another area that we can dabble in. And we do have an understanding of professional ethics, but also education law. There's a lot of different components within this job.
So as part of this presentation, the psychologists at one of our meetings decided we should update our job description, which was about, I don't know, 12 years old or so. And so we came up with these statements. We tried to really simplify it as to, you know, if you're going to work in this district, this is what we expect and we know that you can provide with us. So of course, assessment is still a primary role that we do, the social, emotional, behavioral learning needs, and it's for meeting those personal goals and enhancing wellbeing. It's not just to see if they qualify for an IP. We do collaborate with problem solving teams to develop those proactive and also responsive services for students, families, and educators. And then the behavior analysis, this is someone else's little quote they put on, "It's all fun and games until someone figures out the function of your behavior," which is what we love to do. Figure out, you know, all behavior is communication. And we like to figure out what our parents, staff, or students try to communicate to us based on their behavior. And we do find that fun. We also facilitate the legally required processes based on our state and federal legislation for the assessment accommodation and program planning for individual students. We improve student outcomes with a focus on culturally responsive practices and inclusive service delivery. And we use database decision making.
It's really important that we follow standards for school psychology, just like any other group. So not only do our graduate preparation programs follow standards, but we also have credentialing standards, not only at the state level, but at the national level. Some of our school psychologists in the Verona area school district have a national certification. And so that is a whole separate set of standards that we're following. There's the principles for professional ethics, but we really do try to ensure that we are following the model for comprehensive and integrated school psychological services. This is coming from the National Association of School Psychologists. And here we've included another photo from a school psychologist who received this from a student, indicating various feelings that our students have from time to time. Here is that practice model, and I know there's a lot of text on this screen right now, but this wheel really shows all the different types of services and what different areas. So it's organized into whether it's more data-based decision-making, direct services and direct services. This really encompasses everything that our department does on a day-to-day basis. So school psychologists are like iceberg. So at any one time, you are only seeing about one-fifth of what they are actually doing. There's a lot buried underneath there.
All right, and finally, we just want to share a few more stories. We all love our jobs, otherwise we wouldn't be here. The job is hard, education is hard, but we believe in what we're doing. We believe in this district. And so we enjoy coming to work every day. And so something I wanted to share, and what Dr. Clarity was saying about the difference in communication, I feel old for a lot of reasons. And one is, you know, I still need to bring my paper copies and I can't understand how people can read their notes off their phones. Another thing that makes me feel old is when I saw Mary Seidel, who was a student of mine at UW Milwaukee, being a principal now in this district. So this was, one of my great stories is this year when I was walking out of a pre-K classroom following an observation, I overheard one of the little youngsters say, "Was that a teenager?" I really love my job.
I also had a student today say that they thought I was a student, working with one of our speech and language psychologists. So I added a few other pictures through the years and we could tell a lot of fun stories from our, the work we do with our students. But one time I had a friend who was having trouble getting back into the classroom, really loved Legos, so we were modeling how to get back into the classroom with our Lego blocks and to help with that process. We get very creative sometimes. And then I have even worked with students off of campus. And I have played basketball over at the Boys and Girls Club during the workday, which not everyone gets to have that experience, but that does happen from time to time. It's really nice that every day is a very different day for us.
Yeah, like when we are doing our hardest, most difficult work, it looks like we're playing. So that's how we reach a lot of our kids. So again, we're just going to say thank you and I think open up if there's any questions, but appreciate having this time.
Thank you.
Questions from the board?
I don't have a question so much as just a sincere thank you as well. In order of increasing mental health needs, I'd love to have just another whole army of you guys doing the work you do. And it's good work and so foundational to all the learning that happens here. So really, really appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time.
All right, as we move out of staff recognition into Board of Education reorganization, I want to, intentionally, and I had to say agenda because she would make me take it off, but now she can't. Last night, our own Tamara Stanley was recognized by Mass Youth Choirs as Music Educator of the Year. And we are extremely excited. They were dual recipients and, you know, she can't say anything bad about the other recipient because it was our husband. So congratulations to the Stanleys on their, on their recognition. It was a phenomenal choir concert that they just really packed auditorium. So heard some great music, got to recognize the talents of Mr. and Mrs. Stanley. So again, thank you so much for all of your work.
All right, nice to go into the rest of the board meeting with a giant grin on my face. All right. So if you're following along at home, we're officially on agenda item number five, which is Board of Education reorganization. At our previous meeting, we took care of voting officially for the four board roles that need nominations and voting. Tonight is simply just to put into public space the few additional roles that some board members will be taking this next year. Board members, again, this doesn't take any formal action or voting on our part, but just want to put all of you and the rules you'll be doing this next year into the public space. So our VASD Board Deputy Clerk for the following school year will be Juan Carlos. Thank you for taking that on. Our representative for the Wasby Delegate Assembly that will be in January, again, will be Corby. Thank you for doing a second year at that. And Meredith will serve as the alternate should something happen, Corby, where you might need support in that role. So thanks to both of you. Continuing as our CISA II representative will be John. Thank you again for taking that on. We appreciate those updates. And our IDAC Committee Representation, and I was going to text you Chad, I always forget what IDAC's being for, even though I've been on the committee, quarterly meetings.
Yeah, it's like inter-
Developmental.
Developmental Agency Committee.
I'm glad you also can't quite remember. So they're quarterly meetings where board representation, Dr. Clarity, Chad, we have the Mayor of Pittsburgh, Mayor of Verona, chamber representation, so right, coming together and just talking about things that are happening in the municipalities that serve our district on a quarterly basis. So the folks that will be representatives in those meetings will be John, Joe, and myself. Any questions or additional comments by any board members on whose positions for this year? Thank you all very much again for spreading your knowledge and bringing that knowledge back to this table. We will move on then to our superintendent's report for a nice lofty agenda, starting with-
Like the word lofty?
Lofty, yeah. Very lofty, good stuff.
I had a word for it. Look crazy. All right, we're going to open up with our partners with VAEA and Vespa. And to introduce would be Rochelle, Rochelle Haiti.
Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to be here tonight. I don't know how to follow up with such amazing recognition and all of the wonderful things happening across the district. But I did want to share with you an update. Can we? I wanted to share an update on these wages across the district. It is with excitement to share our recommendation here for the board tonight for a 4.12 base wage increase and steps for our teachers, our hourly staff, our CTS unit, and administrative salary schedules. I want to formally thank VAEA and Vespa for the amazing partnership, collaboration, and work that we do together, always knowing that we're centering our students and staff in the work that we do. We have accomplished a lot this year and I want to celebrate that tonight with all of you and our work and how it aligns to OE4. We are recognizing that the work that we do helps attract and retain our most valuable employees across the district, knowing that there are other districts in the area that are making fairly significant salary schedule changes tonight in some places that are bumping up against the hard work that we've done over the last couple of years to align our teachers and our hourly staff with the highest beginning wages, or almost the highest beginning wages in Dane County. So with that, we can still celebrate tonight, if the board moves forward with the base wages, that we would still have the highest beginning teacher salary in Dane County, the highest beginning salaries for hourly staff in comparison to many of the districts in the area. And these salaries are helping us fill our jobs quickly. We have done an amazing job filling our jobs, filling our postates to ensure that our students have successful educators in seats to allow them to grow. I have invited VAEA and Vespa here tonight to share some talking points. We've got Jamie Brown, who's one of our co-presidents for Vespa, and Shane Keever, who is one of our co-presidents for VAEA. I don't, did I hand it over to you guys?
Yeah, sure. I'll go ahead and start. Good evening. My name is Jamie Brown. I'm a paraprofessional. I work within the 18 to 21 program. I'm a Verona Educational Support Association co-president and I'm also a member of the negotiation team. Recently, I participated in the 2024, 2025 bargaining meetings. The bargaining meetings consist of two parts, base wage bargaining and collaborative conversations. I am very thankful and appreciative for the continuous collaboration with the school board and the district administration. Our collaborative process allows us to bring all voices to the table, not only to bargain our wages, but also discuss changes to the handbook that allows for support staff to improve our working conditions. We are proud to be one of the highest-paid support professional groups in Dane County and to be one of the only support staff that is having collaborative conversations to help make changes to our handbook. Our 4.12 base wage adjustment and step longevity rates has us feeling supported and valued here in the Verona School District. This year, we ratified our tentative agreement with 100% approval from our members. We want to again thank the school board and administration. We look forward to our continued partnership. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Shane Keever, social studies teacher here at the high school, and I'm a co-president of the VAEA along with Diana Lin here and Barbara Ward. They didn't realize I was going to point on them. So I would also like to thank you, the district, for a year-long collaboration. I know at the beginning of this year, I spoke to that and I think the bargaining meetings that we've had this year, the 25, 425, for the 2425 school year, have really been an example of what great collaboration looks like and really a model for the state of Wisconsin. In addition to that, I also wanted to say the utmost appreciation of the inclusion, inclusion of teacher voice. From everything from school, our snow day makeup, communications, to rolling out a literacy training. We trust Dr. Clarity's leadership of the district and we really appreciate bringing in teacher voices into those tough decisions. And also, I also wanted to mention, as we saw here tonight with some wonderful scholars, I think we are making very real that we are helping scholars achieve a healthy and self-fulfilling life. So thank you to the district and I look forward to our work with you again next year.
Absolutely, thank you, Shane. We were just talking about who gets to talk first. I really just wanted to thank the membership of VAEA and Vespa for really dynamic and powerful conversations. And you mentioned the model for what collaboration could look like across our state. I completely agree with you and maybe across our, across our nation. There doesn't, you can have deep, meaningful conversations on a common goal without contentiousness and because we continue to center the humanity of the work. We get up every day as humans that want to do what's best for children. We want to go on that journey. We want to feel valued. We put in, all of us have put in a lot of time, education, effort to be excellent at our crafts and all we want to do is be respected for that. We have a phenomenal Board of Education that really supports our leadership, supports staff and the work that we're able to do together and to go on that journey to be the national model for excellence, grounded equity is due to that mutual respect and collaboration. So thank you all for those opportunities every single, every single day. We talk about what, what should collaboration looks like and point to Verona Area School District because that's, that's the way it should look.
Thank you for having your voices here this evening. I know we talk about this collaboration ongoing in our board meetings, so we know it's happening, but to have all of us in the shared space here, your voices, leadership, and us as a board to really all be nodding, right, and saying, yes, this collaboration is happening and we're feeling mutual admiration and respect for one another and recognizing those common goals. And I certainly want to just say on behalf of the board, if it's okay, that I think all of us would give you all the moon if we could. I think more often than not, we always wish there was more. And so I have been excited about the handbook conversations, ways that we can try to honor the culture with which you are working here when we know we have budgetary limitations. How else can we show up for all of you? And I'm appreciative to our leadership for engaging in those conversations. And again, appreciative to our fellow board members that we just also greatly value all of you and what you do for our students every single- And again, appreciative to our fellow board members that we just also greatly value all of you and what you do for our students every single day. Thank you for taking time to put in the hours that you do on behalf of your fellow colleagues for just, yes, thank you. Thank you.
Jen, can I add something? Sometimes I feel like a broken record because I bring this up so often, but speaking to any members of the community that might be listening, we're able to make these investments in our staff because of the faith our community put in us with the operating referendum a couple of years ago. Without that, we wouldn't be in a position to, to even be able to do this. And this is really important because I, I believe that our staff is the most important asset we have in being able to meet our mission as a district. And investing in that, in our staff is the best way for us to really serve our students. And being able to do that was kind of dependent on that community's support. So we're really thankful for the support that our, that our community gave us and the ability to be able to invest in our district where we need it and it's with our staff.
I'll close.
Yeah.
I think she's purposely maybe hiding behind Barb for a reason, but I want to thank Stacy Tremaine. She came as new representative for VAEA this year and really sat down and, whether it's at the table, it's continued the collaborative process. So thank you so much for being a great, great partner on behalf of, behalf of us. I know you weren't hiding behind my-
So, Board, if it's okay with all of you, we're wondering if we could take care of Board Action A, which is actually taking our vote to approve the proposed 2425 base wage increase while we have our representatives here.
Yeah.
Are we okay with that? Okay. So let me just put that out there formally. So is there a motion to approve the proposed base wage increase for 2425? That was proposed just now by leadership from VAEA, Vespa, and the district.
Some.
Thank you, Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. All in favor of approving the 2425 base wage increase as proposed, signify with aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. The base wage increase has been approved. Thank you again, all of you, for your time. So with that, I'll hand it back to Dr. Clarity to continue through the Superintendent's Report.
In the spirit of like track season, like a relay race.
Yeah, yeah. Pass the time. There we go.
All right. So next, we get the double, we get the double excitement because we get to talk about literacy, which our mission, but it's presented by Teresa Voss, who may be the most exciting person. We're going to invite Ms. Teresa Voss to talk about our library plan progress report.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, Dr. August.
Welcome back.
I'm sorry. I didn't know you were coming with her.
We're all, we're together.
All right. Well, good evening. So last year, you all had the privilege of hearing from Teresa Voss, and she introduced our district long-range plan. And so tonight, you're going to hear an update. And so DPI strongly recommends that we share an update to this plan every year. However, we go one better than what DPI recommends. You can, you will know what's going on in the library just because we feel like it is best practice to share and let our community and our board know what's happening, as well as we've got something to be proud of. We've got the best librarian in the state of Wisconsin, but we've also got fantastic facilities. And so along with facilities, we've got a huge collection and some of the best, some of the best librarians. So she's going to showcase that. She's also going to speak to the three goals that are listed. She's going to speak about our collection and the number of books that we put out. But more importantly, this aligns to our North Star and all of our results policy. It centers our students, and it lifts up student identity and gives space for value on the line. So I'll turn it over. I'll turn it over to Teresa Voss, and she'll take you all through our district library, our district library plan.
All right. Well, thank you. Very nice. And thank you all for letting me join you again. So created a little visual, because I think for me visuals also help, but the goal of this is just to kind of show you where we are at in our three-year, in our three-year cycle and what we've been doing as a team. So we'd open up with, these are students in the high school library. We were actually doing some speed dating with books and sharing ideas, but part of it kind of represents the whole concept of what we are trying to do is get our students to feel comfortable, to feel engaged, and feel like the library is their place to be. So we have eight librarians, and this covers nine school libraries for 11 schools, serving about 5,700 students and about 850 staff. We have about 125,000 different books, along with a large access to our digital consortium, as well as access to the databases that we have. The top picture is our district team. We just had our, one of our district meetings, and we try to meet about every two months and work together both through the technical as well as the adaptive work that we're doing, and you'll see as we go through what we've been working on. The bottom document is what we showed you in August, and then I put the additions at the bottom for, you know, a full narrative piece. So our first goal was really centered around collection development, and our goal with collection development is really to make sure that all of our students have access as well as finding, finding themselves in the resources. And this is both at school as well as off-site. So that's part of our roles, and with the focus of meeting the social, emotional, cultural, as well as learning needs of the school. And so with that, some of our pictures kind of represent it, and we'll talk you through. The first one is an example of some of the data work that we've been doing in our collections, where we actually go through and we look at what we have for resources, the dates of our resources, and the content of our resources. And then you are going to see some students in different aspects of this. So as we are getting new books in, as we are working on giving them a chance to access the books, this is kind of some of their joy. I will also point out, not related to collection development, but the joy of being in the library. All of this, all of these pictures are new furniture that we got this last year. And this was a huge, huge lift, so just want to call that out and put appreciation into this space because you can see the difference with that. With this, kind of to give you a bigger perspective, we had almost a $400,000 budget this year, which is astronomical. And this money comes from the state with expectations how we spend it and use it. About three years ago, and I'm looking at Mr. Vissi because he probably knows it better than I do, but three years ago, it was like $280,000. So we, like, this is a lot, and this has really given us an opportunity to do more digging and finding in the resources. So that is, that was our budget this year for books and databases. We worked on a collection development sheet, and it's attached to it, but with this, the goal is that we are actually being deliberate and intentional with how we are spending from how much are we spending for fiction, how much are we spending for nonfiction, and then even breaking that down in terms of languages, in terms of levels of reading, and then audio as well as visuals. So that is what we've been using for that. Been doing some work together through different conferences. It's the CCBC, which is the Center for Cooperative down on campus. And then we have been using this collection analysis to guide our, our purchases. Another thing we worked on this year is we actually came together and what, and we determined what is aged for our books. So we have a common consistency across all of our grade level bands. So for example, if we had a technology book, what do we deem as an age book in terms of content? And we've never done this, and so this is 20-plus years as librarian, and we've never had this conversation, and this guided us this year. We've also worked on our school program outcome, and we looked at historical fiction this year as a district team, and we used, looked at our diverse titles as well as how SEL pulled into the historical fiction. And then we all took an extra level of how are we getting students to provide input into our collection. We also, during this whole collection development, have developed an initial template for evaluating our databases. We have criteria in the district for how we evaluate books, but we have not really dug into how do we evaluate our database. So we did that. We looked at our audiovisual needs, and we've actually removed some titles that we didn't feel met our needs anymore. And we have added, so next year, we'll be adding K1 to our SOAR collection, which is our statewide collection. They have a lot more simultaneous use, as well as when we look at concepts of print, they have some of that. We are expanding our Swain digital streaming for the whole district. We've had it at the high school for a few years and have had kind of a chance to feel this out, and we'll be expanding that. And we've added Vox, which is, for those of us who are a little bit older, this used to be the cassette and book bag that you took home. It's now one book. So you put your little airphones in, and it will actually play. So we've added that. And then we've added some adaptive books, and we are working with the special education department for some tactile stuff on the books. So as the students go through, they have both the tactile as well as the reading for that. We were working with building leadership to share out the library goals. So everybody who had a new librarian or new principal this year, we met with them, talked about library goals. I put a little asterisk with the furniture because that really helped as all of it. And the other thing that we did is we added some new slash additional shelving in a couple of our schools because we actually didn't have enough room for our books with all of the shifts. So that is goal number one, really working around collection development. Is it easier for me to go through all the goals, or do you want me to stop if you have questions right now? Sorry. Whatever. This was, this was the most hefty one.
Sure. But I have one question now, just while we brought, I'm just curious, what do you do with the aged books?
Oh, that's a great question. If they are no longer like worthy of being in this space, meaning outdated, culturally not appropriate, we say thank you and-
Discard.
Discard.
Nice one.
Recycle.
Discard them. Books that have, haven't had a lot of checkouts, you know, like it's like your closet. You can't always have, you know, can't always bring everything in and not let anything go. Like you will notice outside of the high school library, I have the free reads. So, free reads.
Got it.
Great question. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Our second goal focused around district standards and our K5 curriculum. And so we worked really hard on going through our AASL standards to see if they're still what we are wanting. We looked at a couple of different school districts to see what they have. There's nothing like templated help. So for us, we are starting from scratch, and for this, we have some to start. And then we use a lot of our PLC time to start working on curriculum. So that first Monday of the month for PLCs for us as district librarians, this was the first time we've ever gotten to plan. So for us, this was super exciting, and we are closer, and we've had some amazing conversations around what we are hoping that our students are able to do as they go through. And then our third goal was around literacy and library connections, and we will work to strengthen student, staff, family, and community literacy and library opportunities. And so one of the biggest things that we did this year was Battle of the Books, and we had over 420 kids. We had every school have students at this activity. And you can see in the middle, this is our K8 group is, that's from the side view. Our high school team actually took second in state this year, which was great. We were super excited about that. And then the two on the far right were actually doing the elementary pedagogy, and it was just neat to hear them and their conversation. Elementary also did an author visit, and that just kind of came on, like somebody said, I want to do this for you, and he's an author, and he said, I do it for free. I want kids to read, and like he was here for two full days. And like, this is amazing for us because authors are expensive. So that was nice to have. And then the other thing that we are working on for our connections and collaborations is we're working on visual checklist for students, and we're working with the autism team. So as our students come in, they have some visual cues, and then some of these same cues in our incoming classrooms, as well as across the district. So that's part of it. Other things that we are doing is we're working on literacy nights, and we're connecting with the Madison Reading Project. Madison Reading Project has done some with some of our schools. They also come out for our VASD Reads, which used to be Books on Bike, and we had to rename Books on Bike because we do not bike anymore, and our poor kids kept thinking we were giving out bikes. We're like, no, we're just giving out books. But it did. Historically, we did start off in bikes, and it got so big, so quickly, we just couldn't do it. So we drive, but we're working with Madison Reading Project on that. And then we are continually, continuing our work with our public library for our summer reach as well as outreach program. Our teen librarian, Leah, has done some work at Badger Core in the high school. So, and then all of our elementary for the summer reading is working with public library, either they're going to the public library or they're having public library. So that's the three goals that we've had and are continually to working on. And this leads us to what's next. We still have more work to examine our collection. It is a continuous process for us and one that we love and one that we want to make sure that we are doing justice to. We want to work on our co-teaching opportunities, finishing elementary curriculum, start examining our databases so that we have a template to use to evaluate. In this, I pulled an article, being the librarian that I am, from School Library Journal. What we are doing actually matches what the district, I mean nationwide, district librarians are doing. So it was nice to, I mean, this is what we came up with, but it was nice to see that others are in the same boat with us. So we will continue to do it. We are blessed to be in a district that supports us extremely, extremely well. And like bigger picture, like we want everybody to use this space. On your desk is one of the things that we, around your desk, on your tables in front of your nameplates, you will actually see some bookmarks. So I know, right? We had a district-wide bookmark competition, and these were some of our winners. So it's another way that we are just trying to get students involved in this. So enjoy from that. And then we are also opening it up. So for all of our families out there, we have Summer Checkout. We want books in your hands. So connect with your schools. Every school will be up here in Summer Checkout. So. That's all I have.
Summer Checkout, just to kind of emphasize that Summer Checkout is big. Not many districts support Summer Checkout. Their libraries close. And so the fact that we work hard to keep books in the hands of students throughout the summer speaks volumes about what we think and believe about literacy. So kudos to our librarians that worked really hard throughout summer school and the weeks outside of summer school to make sure that students have an opportunity to, to read.
Any questions?
I just want to say that I appreciate the program. My kids are avid readers.
Thank you.
And they love that all the books. They move away. They're just so excited and just are sponges and just be able to spread that knowledge and joy of learning, good reading. It's something that'll stay with them their entire lives, and that's the gift that keeps on giving. So I'm very grateful.
Thank you.
I would just like to take this opportunity to say that I have been getting all the emails about the overdue books. They will be here by the end of the year. They're on the bottom.
We love that they have the books. Like, it's like, it's like the special. We love that they have the books, and we want them to have the books.
I appreciate so much the work you do with the collection because my kids come home with more books from school than from the public library, from anybody else. They just find what they want, which is so nice, and then they never return it. But, yeah.
Could I just say, in case it wasn't apparent from this presentation, that I would hope the community and folks listening recognize that you and your team do more than checkout books. And admittedly, having-
And admittedly, having known you for so long, I see very clearly on slide 52, the desire to expand co-teaching. I know that's something you hold high value in and I just want to elevate the instructional power that you and your team bring to our schools, to our staffs, to our students. It's not just conduits to putting books in students' hands. So whatever it is that your team needs for support, know that as a board, and I would hope to say as leadership too, we want to make sure that those goals you have for co-teaching and supporting more instructionally, that we want to help see those to come to fruition. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so I double check and not introduce every speaker that's coming up today, Amy. Solo?
It's just me.
Okay. Again, I thought it was Dr. Rockets. I did notice. Next, we, we have a, a topic from our community, but it was actually a combination of new legislation as well as one area that was a intentional sign on from the Broner School District. The reason we are presenting both because they are, they have very, they have a lot of similarities, but they are two distinctly different programs. And so in discussing direct admit Wisconsin and the Wisconsin Guarantee, we want to provide you with this resource along the way that as we, as we go along, that shows the distinct differences between the two programs. And also as which one of them was a program that we intentionally signed up for as a, as a method to increase the likelihood of acceptance in higher education for our Broner School District students. And a second program, which is a, which is the, a legislative 95, Act 95, excuse me, that is law that was implemented at the same time. But again, two very distinct programs. Okay. The ramifications on high school in particular and the way that we look at the services for our students are heavily impacted. I'm sure it drives community discussion and will drive more discretion appropriately. So we want to create a space to present the information of what these two programs are. And then go into deep discussion around implementation and expect expectations for implementation from our board to our community.
Thank you for that, Dr. Thordy. Very much interested in, given the timing of both of these, both are rolling out at the exact same time. Both are being implemented for the first time beginning with the class of 2025. And both have Wisconsin on the names. So you can see lots of confusion about that and certainly appreciate your feedback this evening as we try to clarify the two and think about what are the things we need to be taking into consideration as we implement both in alignment with, with our equity framework. So as we named, both are programs beginning with the class of 2025 and they're intended to support acceptance and transition specifically to UW system schools post-high school graduation. So that's what they have in common. First, we'll speak a bit about direct admit Wisconsin. So direct admit was the program that Dr. Cleary referred to that we opted into. When we thought about our equity framework and our commitments to increasing access and minimizing barriers for our students, direct admit fully met those sort of criteria. Not all schools in Wisconsin are participating, but this was an active leadership move that we chose at, at the Broner High School, with which to make this opportunity available to our students. And the way direct admit works is it's actually an early proactive admission process for our students. And we do all the work behind the scenes. So for our junior class, we work with the UW system schools to share their academic records with those participating UW universities, which is all except for Eau Claire, La Crosse and Madison. So we share their academic records behind the scenes and then students will receive acceptance letters as a result of the UW system reviewing their academic records. They get to do all of this without filling out an application and without paying any application fees. So for some of our junior class, this could mean they've done nothing. They didn't have to do anything to opt in. If they wanted to opt out, they could fill out a form. But otherwise, they finished the end of their junior year. Behind the scenes, we have a great team that will make some magic happen in sharing their academic records and that specific data, like their transcript data. And then in July, they'll receive acceptance letters from different UW schools. What I find in the mail, I got an acceptance letter to UW Whitewater or UW Platteville. Maybe it was a school I wasn't even considering, but now students have all these opportunities and possibilities without, again, the barrier of completing an application or paying an additional fee. So very excited. The only way that I can follow T-Boss in a presentation is if I get to share about a program that eliminates barriers for students. So we're very excited about direct admit and proud to be one of the participating schools who opted in to make this possible for the class of 2025. So that is direct admit Wisconsin. Again, you'll see that in the first column on your sheet here. Students do not need to apply. They don't really need to do anything. They'll simply get the acceptance to any of those UW schools for which their, their academic record matches the criteria that the school. It's important to note that direct admit is not necessarily a guarantee though. Will share the academic record doesn't guarantee that UW Platteville or UW Whitewater, Stevens Point will accept you. It simply is a review of your academic record and then an opportunity for the universities to reach out with that acceptance. So then the shift to the Wisconsin Guarantee, Wisconsin Guarantee is indeed a guarantee. So this is, as Dr. Cleary said, legislatively mandated as part of Act 95. Act 95 requires, it offers guaranteed admission to UW system schools for all students who qualify. And the way that they do this is they look at first year freshman applicants who are in the top 10% of their class at the end of their 11th grade year. And then they guarantee them admission to any UW school except for Madison. And then they have the caveat that if you're in the top 5%, you're also guaranteed admission to UW Madison. So this one is indeed a guarantee. If you're in the top 10%, you have guaranteed admission to any UW system school except Madison. Top 5%, you do indeed have UW Madison guaranteed admission. The way that it works is that after the close of the sixth semester, so the end of the junior year, so coming up close for our class of 2025, your GPA will be calculated. We, as a high school team, will calculate their class rank and they will be notified of their class rank in early July. So students will then have a number, one, et cetera, on their, on their actual letter that they'll receive from us in July. Different than direct admit, students will actually need to apply. So they would still need to fill out an application, pay any associated fees, et cetera, if they were indeed interested in applying to a UW system school based on the Wisconsin Guarantee. So kind of two very distinct systems in, in that regard. Act 95 mandates that we can only use GPA as the sole criteria by which to rank students. So it's solely based on GPA, not credit attainment, not difficulty of classes, any of those other things that are solely about GPA. So with that, if we have students that tie, we don't have any criteria with which we would be able to differentiate that tie. Both those students would have the same class rank. So both students, multiple students have a 4.0, they will all be ranked number one. And that's how we would proceed, given the criteria and the guidance of the current.
I have a question. As in, like, if, say there's greater than 5% of the students are at 4.0. Is it the cutoff, the hard 5% of the population?
We send all of our.
Literally all the 4.0s, if it's 7%, we'll go.
Well, we're sending, that's, we will have to make a choice with our, our responsibility is to send our, our class rank.
Right.
And we will, if we have more than constitutes the student body, that's what they will receive.
That's what they will receive.
Amy, how many of our students or graduating students are in the top 5%? And then how many are in the 10%? What's the difference? I mean, how many are we sending?
So we have 448 students in the junior class. So we have approximately 24 students in the top 5% and.
But is that the reality? I mean, that's what I'm wondering, like, how many are actually trying to make 4.0s?
Sure. So we won't know merit until the close of the semester. We know current GPAs that we're, we're pretty close around that number for the number of students who currently have a 4.0 after five semesters of school. We won't know until the end of the semester exactly how many will meet this criteria. But we're committed to ranking them all number one if we have multiple, you know, if we continue with the number of 4.0s that we have. If that answered your question.
And does that seem like that will actually be 5%? I would think we would have.
I think we might be very, I think we might be pretty close depending on where we land. I think we're like four or five students off of the actual 5% number.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Now, they have to apply for this still.
Correct.
So the chances of, say you have 30 students that have a 4.0, the chances of all 30 of them wanting to go to UW Madison, which is the only school where that would really matter, is probably fairly small. And so maybe this is more a question for the legislature if they ever want to think this through. Is there like an order to the timing? Like, we're going to have to supply these ranks. The numbers might not necessarily add up. They then have to apply. And then through that process somewhere, you get an idea of like, how many then get that guaranteed admission? So I think it's, like, I'm not quite that, I don't think I'm as worried about us having more students because they're going to want to go other places too. I'm just confused a little bit as to the, the process that's mandated by law. It doesn't seem to be spelled out all the way.
Yeah. Thanks, Matt. I would say, yes, we're still waiting on, we are assuming we're going to be sending a list. We actually don't have specific details about what that looks like. It could just be when our students apply, they get to write number one for their class rank on their application. And then that is assigned to UW that the student, they're number one, they're obviously in the top 5 or 10% and go from there. But a lot of those technical behind the scenes details about what we'll be submitting to share what constitutes 5% of our, or our top 5% or top 10% are yet to be determined or communicated at this point.
Does the guaranteed admission apply to the top 5 or 10% of our class? Or the top 5 or 10% that are interested in applying to UW school?
The top 5 or 10% of their class.
That's what I thought.
So I think this is one of those great ideas. Really hadn't thought through how this is going to play out when they wrote this out. So I'm just gonna wonder where their heads were at, but that's fine. So I think it was really a great idea. So the implementation is going to be interesting at best. And I think this might be the first year that it is probably pure, just with the kids took classes they were interested in. They got the grades they got. I'm concerned as kids start putting schedules together in future years, the pressure that's going to be put on students, staff. There's going to be a lot of unintended consequences that come along with this. Yes. No, go ahead.
To your point, we began today with our student advisories and we pride ourselves that every state student advisory, we, we leave that space happier than we came in it. The one time that it did not happen was when we talked about Wisconsin Guarantee. And just the immediate sense of pressure, the immediate sense of, am I, someone making a judgment right now, am I good enough? And that is not who we are as an organization. You're all, you're all good enough. And to have that singular, that singular piece of only, only the grade and not looking at any other characteristics of a child. And we're talking about developing the whole child. And that is, that's, that was.
So as you say that though, I mean, that's what our policies codify. We are looking at developing a whole child. So this, I think, undercuts our actual policies. And so I'm, I'm struggling with knowing what a guaranteed in-state school admission means financially. It's a heavy financial, you know, benefit as opposed to going out of state. Or, oh, I just really wish I liked this and I don't. I'm just, I just have a hard time with how, how does this incentivize students to stretch? How does this incentivize students to, well, I mean, there's, there's classes. Yeah, no, of course it doesn't. That's, but that's the whole point. That's what our policies are meant to do. We want to help our kids grow and I don't feel like this, this disincentivizes academic challenge. And I think it disincentivizes stretching in areas that are uncomfortable, like maybe areas that you don't feel. Like if I was taking an art class, that would have been a stretch for me, just with my non-talent. But it would have been something I would have enjoyed doing. But if that meant that maybe my grade point would be dinged by a A minus or a B plus, and that has to be something that kids are going to consider, I find that really just, that's contrary to what we are set up to do.
True. I want to share something because my daughter, who's in fifth grade, is already hearing and talking about this because there's some of her friends at home or siblings. And she came back and said that, I, I don't know if I want to continue tweeting because I'm afraid I'm not going to get as good grades and then I won't get to college. That's already a fifth grader thinking, worrying about that. And it's already, my concern is that, that, you know, yeah, she's young and talked to her about it. But my concern is exactly that they're going to have to really oversimplify, create a novel education. I'm not, you know what I mean? I mean, just be afraid to take chances and then expand, go opposite of what we're trying to do, which is the whole learner and expand. Global citizens instead, they're going to be focusing on just getting the highest GPA however they can.
But then the paradox is let's say there is an A minus that creeps in there despite all best interests. And they don't have then a background, an academic background that would actually allow them to be accepted into a comparable school if they are cutting back. I mean, I just feel like there's so many, there's, I actually don't feel like there's anything good about this other than the intention, which.
No, that's not it.
Okay. Just trying to find.
But the question is, how do we pivot to make sure that we can still, that this doesn't impact our mission? How do we, how do we, what do we do to not have this, the law that was not thought out very well, not negatively impact the mission, which is a good mission to give, you know?
My personal opinion, because I feel like philosophically, when we're, when I'm hearing we, our policies, I feel like holistically, education has tried to stop making GPA be so fundamentally key. I really feel like this has been energy for college admissions for a long time. So in a lot of ways, I feel this is turning backwards. I don't want to rush and change anything on behalf of a policy that could flop in one year. Right to your point, Amy, we have no idea what this is going to do next year. So I'm so cautious on philosophically shifting things that we're doing to funnel into something that is so inherently disturbing. Now, I don't want to disserve our students and what this is set up to do, but I just, I get nervous on how we react to this when I still firmly believe in what we are doing here and what I think education has tried to do to help students be really globally prepared to be citizens. It does not, it is not defined by a GPA. I just, as an educator, I believe that, that a student is not inherently their GPA. So I, that's where I just, you know, I don't want to like bury head in sand and just la, 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 la. And I would hate to see us do dramatically scary things that we don't philosophically want to do if this weren't in place. You know what I'm saying?
I fundamentally agree with that. But the problem is, is it is in place for now. And that's where I've gone back and forth on the same thing, like, we shouldn't change good policies because of a bad directive. And yet it's still a bad directive that's impacting our kids. And I, I'm struggling with that too. I guess what I, one of the questions that I have is, you know, I think rushing in to change something feels hasty. Because I honestly am hoping that at some point, somebody will say, you know what? Maybe this isn't going to work after all, now that we've actually spoken to people outside of the legislature. But regardless, what are we looking for to find out when this starts to negatively impact our students? Are we looking at a drop in our career tech, our, you know, our, our arts classes, our music classes? Are we looking at a drop in our AP enrollment? I'd like to know what are some of our trigger points that we see, okay, now it's starting to become a problem when our enrollment is decreasing in our, you know, our higher, you know, level classes because kids are afraid or they're pursuing something different. I would like to know what that is so we can be monitoring that. Because while I don't think this year is going to be the indicator of how this program works, this year's going to be fine because kids weren't choosing classes based on this. It is going to start impacting course selection in the next, you know, year. What, what are we going to look? What, what are we going to look for to say, we now have a problem? Because that's when we do have an obligation to our students to look at, at solutions, whether that's, you know, I, I think we've had the weighted grade conversation out there for a hundred years at this point. And I have, it, it hasn't mattered. It might matter now. Do we have something to look at? Do we have some type of incentive where there's a pass fail option? What, there's a million different creative ideas. They don't need to come from, you know, a brainstorming session here. That's for all of you to think through and I'm sure you've already put energy towards that. I think just as a board member and as a community member, I want to know when we are concerned that our kids' education is, um, no longer serving our kids.
Yes, um, man, this guy going quick. So let me just.
We're there. We're down.
Corby, I see you want to talk, but do you mind me, uh?
No, please do. You're good.
I mean, I'm not gonna freak out. I, you know, I think our administrators are gonna think this all through. I think the reality is that it's been competitive like this to get into UW schools, particularly Madison, for a long time, particularly from this area, um, because they've had quotas forever. I do worry about course selections and things like that. Um, I think it's incumbent on us to tell our community, like, this sort of law and this focus on grades encourages our kids to race against one another. It encourages them to get all spun up and to work and race. And when we're trying to deal with like all the mental health stuff that's going on, this is actively sending the wrong message. There are a lot of ways to get UW. I bombed out of high school and I still made it through a PhD at that school. Like, there are a lot of ways to do it. So I'm not freaking out yet. There are a lot of things out there that are sending messages that our kids need to race. We can buy into how they're renewing, you know, the focus on testing scores, ACTs and SATs at colleges again, where they had kind of taken the pedal off the gas a little bit. There's a lot of stuff out there. You know, I want us to be able to set the example that you will never do better in a class than the class you take because you love it. And that is just a fundamental truth because that motivates you, um, to get through the hard stuff in that class. Um, so you have to take the things you love. I, you know, I trust our admin team is thinking about this more than me. I have a lot of the same concerns that you do, Meredith, but I'm just not freaked out yet. This is just another thing out there that's trying to get our kids to spin themselves up over some number that when they get on the other side of this, whole experience isn't gonna define them.
I would agree, so this is a huge carrot. I have a thought like this.
But it's not, it's not, it's not a scholarship. You still gotta pay for it.
But it's in-state tuition versus out-of-state tuition.
One of the top schools in the country.
And it's living at home versus, you know, I mean, I think there's a lot of benefit to being here at UW.
I, I appreciate that. I think that, I think that don't move you out.
I, I think, I think not freaking out is a great, a great strategy always in general. And that's where I want to know what will, what will be the triggers that there is a problem? Because I think, again, we want kids to take the classes they love. And at sixteen, do they know what classes they love yet? And this, I think, inhibits exploration, which I think has such a huge educational value.
Where are you?
I agree.
I'm just, I'm, I'm listening, watching, reading at the same time on UW's website, just to make sure. Has, have you guys heard of the Academic Advancement Program at UW? Anybody heard of that? Okay. So it's a program that's put in place, looking at, uh, students for, for other things, things other than their GPA. You go through this whole entire application process where you're, you're showing your extracurriculars, you're demonstrating your writing competency, you're showing your math skills. It's been around since nineteen seventy-nine and it's been there for, for, for reasons like this so that students don't have in their mind that they have to race to get to UW or that they have to take these certain type of classes and that it's dependent strictly upon their GPA to get admitted to the university. But the, the blank stares that I got just now are the same blank stares that students give when, when I tell them about it. They don't know it exists. And I think things like that, our messaging needs to be the, the driving factor with this. This isn't the only way. This is one of the ways that you can get to UW. But there's, uh, many, a myriad of other ways for you to get into UW. And I think, you know, those programs need to be somehow made prevalent or known or, or, you know, because when you mention that to students, they're like, what? I could have, I could have gotten in that way versus having to, having all this anxiety and angst around, uh, I have to get this certain GPA to be admitted. So I think the messaging is everything.
Man, I do agree. We, we have to wait until how this plays out because I know some of the fears out there is that this top five percent cutoff is gonna clog the system, essentially delaying the acceptance of other students that are taking these other non-traditional paths to get in and delaying their acceptance potentially to a point where they might have to choose another school and UW might be their first option. Because of the way this is being implemented, which we still don't know how.
Which then, that frustration belongs with UW's system, not us. So if those systematic logistical things create issue at the UW level, then that is where the direction of the irritation needs to go and they have to make accommodations. I mean, that's, we talk about this, right, of like where does the accountability fall? And if some of this falls flat, that is where it belongs. And with the legislature for like these decisions, so how, right, that we are not trying to deflect but really make sure that that's, that's not something that we have control over.
Yeah, that, just to follow up on Jen's point, that's what I want the community to take away from this discussion is if you're hearing what we all have to say on this, we didn't choose this. And if we had a choice, we wouldn't have chosen this. We would have chosen something like what we did choose, which is allowing a pathway into college, into UW system colleges that doesn't require students to compete against each other and that looks more holistically at a student's whole record rather than just a number and a ranking, you know, like your worth relative to your peers, which is what I don't like about this. It pits our students against each other. Uh, but I just like, I, 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 I don't want there to be confusion and to make it seem like our board or our administration elected to create this environment that we're gonna find ourselves in.
Right. Well, to Corby's point, I think communication is important, but also, um, just making sure that we also have, to Meredith's point, um, highlight if it's impacting student decisions so that we're aware, right? Don't, obviously you never want to have any knee jerk reactions to anything. You want to give it time and space to play out. But we also want to be monitoring to see if it actually changes behavior in our students, which is counter to what we're trying to achieve.
So.
Can I just add a logistical quick thing that I'm noticing, which threw me off at first? Slide fifty-nine, compared to the handout. If you look at the second to last, the handout says, "Admission Guaranteed." It doesn't have that second piece. So if this handout is gonna be front-facing places, that, because it's not, right? According to what you said, it's with the criteria piece. So I just want to make sure that that, because the handout then gets confusing. Thank you.
Wait, Jen, are you highlighting, which part are you highlighting?
So on the handout compared to slide fifty-nine, the second to last piece, it says, "Is admission guaranteed?" It's only guaranteed with direct admit if they match the university's school's criteria, right? It's, so on slide fifty-nine, there is more text there than there is on the handout. And it, the handout then actually isn't accurate as it stands. Right? Okay.
Yeah, one of those slides is the most current one.
Okay.
And that's when, that's the one that we distributed to families.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
In our family info session and at our junior class meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Just thinking abbreviated to get it all on.
Yeah, just when you were talking, it was a book. Okay.
Can I just say, can I just say, like, we spent a lot of time talking about the five percent in UW Madison. I don't think that's where this causes a problem. I think that the numbers, my guess quickly that the numbers are gonna bear out, that's not the crunch. The crunch is gonna be with the other system schools that historically used to take a wider variety of students are now gonna be more focused on those ten percent that want to get in there, that, that match up there. I think that's where the numbers that we've been kind of fretting about, that, just in looking at this, to me and me where it crunches at, like the students that want to go to Whitewater, that might get a little bit more competitive now.
And because we've opted into both options, we can have students that are already getting an acceptance letter to UW Whitewater in July without ever even having to apply based on how they're looking at the academic record. But I hear your point, John, in terms of what will the lens of those UW system admissions be in terms of the numbers that they, that they can take and that will be important for our consideration?
The thing, um, so one last thing, it is important to highlight to families because I think this is gonna be a, uh, it's going to look like a simple decision or a simple process unfortunately as we look forward. But I think the bottom part where it's, uh, specific programs and majors, it doesn't guarantee admission to those. That is a huge piece when you get to your school. You're not going to go in and just automatically, you may get into the school but you won't necessarily be able to pursue what you want to pursue without having the robust coursework that we traditionally encouraged, you know? I think that may come as a surprise.
Yeah, as a team, we're prepared to do a few things in terms of leadership moves here, right? We're, we're fully prepared to comply with the law and to rank students as we need to and to send out the messages by July. And as far as the, the numbers and calculations, Jen, I realize I said twenty-four, I can do math, it's twenty-two.
I know, I wrote it, I wrote it down.
Sorry. We had, that number fluctuated a bit as students come in out of the class, so I've had twenty-four, I can't think of twenty-two. Um, but we're fully prepared to comply as we need to with the GPA. And we're also prepared that if we have more than twenty-two students who have a four point oh, that we are committed to sending all of those names or whatever the process is to honor our students and their accomplishments in that way. And at the same time, we're committed to thinking about how we support students with their academic and career plan along the way, right? This is obviously something that will be front and center for some families. And how do we help our students six, twelve, think about, what am I good at? What do I want to try? What do I want to explore? What are things that are of interest to me so that as they approach course selection, they can realize the important value of Project Leadway course or CTE course or anything else that can help give them, um, that well-rounded experience to help them prepare to thrive in a diverse global society? And how can we also continue to message to students and advisory that this is not, this isn't the only way to get admission to UW Madison? There are other things or other, you could just apply. And what are the other things that admissions may be looking at, um, in the meantime? So I think those are some of the things that we're talking about. To your point, Meredith, in terms of what is the data that will help us to understand how this is affecting our students? Course selection is big, obviously, but course selection doesn't happen again until next January. We were already committed to a process of reviewing our course guide in the fall with student input to talk about what classes do you want to see in the course guide? What are you most interested in taking? And it will be interesting to hear student voice at that point about whether this is a factor that they're considering in the courses that they're interested, interested in proposing or interested in taking. And so those, that'll be important street data for us to begin to see how is this affecting students and their thought process around how they're approaching course selection as we go. So I think those are some of the things that our team is talking about to make sure that, yes, we can be in compliance with what this is telling us we must do. And here's what we believe is really good for kids in terms of how we support academic and career planning and how we help to bring their voices to the forefront around what that, what that looks like. And then obviously continuing to problem solve around all of these other, feel like we opted into direct admit. Direct admit allowed us to reduce barriers for students. And in some ways, we're seeing additional barriers via the Wisconsin Guarantee that are also perhaps being created here. And how can we minimize that for our students to be authentic to, to our mission and our, our values as a district, is a thing that, the balancing act that will continue to, to find.
You know, one thing I would specifically like to see would be, um, next year's eighth graders, what classes they're opting in because that will be the first group that's coming in with this as a backdrop, but without any prior grades. And I would love to be able to compare that to some historic ninth grade class offerings and kind of start at that point to see how that influences. Because I'm thinking if next year I'm a junior and I've already, you know, my grade point's pretty locked in, it may not impact what I choose. As a ninth grader, I think that's where we're gonna start seeing the biggest, um, impact. And if we can start tracking those numbers through that cohort, that would be, um, that would be helpful to me. I don't know if that would be helpful for anyone else, but that would be what I would like to see.
Most definitely. And, and our first cohort, those eighth grade students are also the first cohort with which Act sixty applies to them. So they will also be required to take financial literacy. So their course selection process is going to have some different nuances than prior classes. So looking at their data, Meredith, will be really important for us to make sense of what they're thinking.
Thank you. If you want to just reiterate, we didn't pick this. It's not what we wanted.
Just really, really quickly, uh, Meredith, you asked, uh, I think, I lost count. I was trying to count how many times, it was like seven comments ago. Oh, three, three here. But your very good questions around how is administration, uh, looking at metrics and monitoring the impact during that first year so we could make, uh, come to the table with decisions based off real, real metrics? Uh, and the things that we have already commit, well, we commit to monitoring all of our course selection, but we need to pay special attention to our AP honors, uh, coursework, uh, as well as I, I want to have a keen eye on the arts, uh, and especially our arts and our career tech, uh, programs. You know, sometimes, uh, the, uh, discussion of weighted, which I understand why it comes into the conversation. I, I think weighted, people only think of like the four content areas and an AP class at that, at that level. You know, I, we have just as skilled artists that should be on their way to Juilliard, uh, or in the, in, in those categories that we still want to make sure are, are taking, taking those courses, courses as well. You know, how do you, if you go down to our CD, or where you can, you have, uh, welders currently right now, they walk out with licenses that can, that can do, to, to, to do this work and have a, a very strong skill set. How do you, you know, how, how are we choosing what's a weighted, what's, what's, what's not weighted?
Well, I think it's a great, like, how do we start that conversation if we need to?
Correct.
You know, because we haven't and it hasn't, I, I don't want to jump to something because of a bad law, but I also want to start, yeah, because you're, you're right. What if it's, I mean, the art that we saw last week? Pretty sure some of that was above and beyond what, you know, would be, some of it was amazing, I mean, all of it was amazing. But we had a senior who was just, you know, did some really fantastic stuff. We want to recognize the top coursework in all of our different levels and.
I'll make it to Meredith. While the conversation sometimes comes up about weighted grades and would that solve this problem? If we are identifying this as a problem, right, which is how many in itself? But, um, when we actually looked at the students currently who have four point oh's, every single one of them has taken at least one AP class. In fact, all of them except for one have only taken one. The rest have taken multiple AP classes and are still maintaining that four point oh. So even if we were weighting it, mathematically, it still might not tease out or, or actually narrow the field. So it might not actually accomplish what people are even thinking it might. While in the process, it could be doing some, um, some harm to how we're thinking about perceived difficulty of classes and value judgments about classes. And again, everything that goes back to preparing our students to thrive in a diverse global society. Certainly TWE is doing that, certainly Pro Start is doing that, certainly Advanced PNO is doing that. And those are typically not courses that are often considered for, for weighted grades and stuff.
Maybe that's a difference where they should be recognizing that too. Looking at it either more inclusively or, but I, I think, I'm gonna be curious to see if in four years' time, our top five and ten percent still have that same, you know, level of, uh, we'll see what happens.
Of the academic rigor.
Yeah. I mean.
Which again, to your point, rigor, you know, first that is, yeah. Corby, Jen, one more?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think, if I remember correctly, Wisconsin Guarantee is part of Assembly Bill three seventy, isn't it? I, I swear it is.
Wisconsin Guarantee is Act ninety-five.
Yep, that, that's, I, I thought it was in conjunction with Assembly Bill three seventy. And if so, then to me, Meredith's concerns are very valid because when you said barriers, I think what we're gonna see based on the percentages in student grade point averages are stu, less students with barriers being admitted to UW. Unless, unless they're made aware that there are other ways to get into UW. And I think this was very purposeful. And that's why I'm saying I think it's part of, of Assembly Bill three seventy.
So intentionally, and besides our similar haircuts, that was, you know, kind of what I was, yeah, I really wanted to go back to the equity framework, especially this. I was, yeah, I really wanted to go back to the equity framework, especially this, this our last part, but when we talked about what we acknowledge. When you take this bill, overlay it with this phenomenal work from our community, from our board and from our staff, it flies in the face of everything that we, that we, that we believe in. And I, we talk about we acknowledge the barriers, we, it's also an opportunity for us to continue to think about how to dismantle even barriers that are handed to us, uh, along, along the way. And, you know, so I know this is a, this is a long journey, but this, this is why we did the work. And I, again, appreciate of, of, of our board for having these deep, meaningful discussions, because I know that's what you prioritize.
Yeah. Thank you, board and the leadership for just the space and for all your voices and the conversation.
I'm glad we had this conversation so much in public to see that we're thinking about these things, we're talking about it out loud.
Yes.
And there's nothing that's, that, that they're not hearing that's kind of behind the scenes, right? They're getting from us, we're thinking about this, we don't like it.
Yeah.
We know to Meredith's point, you know, it's, we can hope for the best, but we can prepare for the worst, right? How we prepare for the worst if this sticks around longer than we, we want to. And just be aware of what the impacts could be, right? So that we can get in front of it and ensure that we can fulfill the mission.
Can I just bring this all back home? Let's bring it all. This law is exactly why we have advisory committees, because this is the type of thing that happens when even if they're not being malicious about it, people imagine what other people want and then try to give it to them. And so I think this makes even more powerful, the effort that admins put into working with student advisory committees, parent advisory committees, staff advisory committees to inform the policies so that we ourselves are not sitting up here being like, I would imagine that students really want X, like sugary drinks, I want my Coca-Cola out here in the school, I would imagine. And we talk to them, most of them probably don't. I think that I'm old school because I drink so much Coca-Cola and they're under their healthier beverages. And, and I think that's one of the things that's, that tonight at least has been really kind of in my face. It's like, there's a difference between this type of leadership and governance where you're listening to people and you're finding out what they actually need and want. And this other type of thing where even if, again, you're not being malicious about it, which is arguable whether or not you are, you're just assuming what people want, trying to throw it out there in a simplistic way that creates so many problems. Anyway.
That did, so I know, that did sort of summarize, like, with having had the advisories on earlier.
Yeah.
So with that said, since I do feel as though after this, our kind of agenda shifts a little bit more toward our governance work, would everyone be, be okay if we took like a five-minute pause, break, move, do what needs to happen, administration kind of shift and prepare? Okay. Let's take five. All right. Thanks, everyone, for just taking that little refresh and break, and we're excited to continue through the superintendent's report.
All right. Well, Dr. Angela Hawkins, thank you. And Jason Rubo. All right, this will be sort of a two-part, it'll be AI and then that'll transition into results policy.
Yeah, for technology.
For technology. So kind of, well, we'll tell you when we're finished.
So tonight, we're going to talk to you about the current state of artificial intelligence and for all of us. We're going to start with a slide that has a quote and it talks about artificial intelligence isn't a substitute for human intelligence. And so there are so many people with so many disceptions about AI, we want to set the record straight tonight. So tonight, we're going to talk about our current state. Where are we and what are we doing? Much of this work is grounded in our acceptable use policy. I'm going to share just some interesting statistics with you. Across our country, more than 50 million children are sitting in classrooms. They're learning to read, they're conducting science experiments, they're listening to the soothing sounds of differential calculus. However, what we do know is that most of them are not engaging with artificial intelligence. And one of the things that, uh, Dr. Clarity and I, we had a chance last year to attend a conference, and one of the things that they spoke highly of was that the new opportunity to achieve an equity gap lies in our students not being able to leverage and access artificial intelligence, which is the technology that will impact their lives, if not now, but moving forward. As a forward-thinking district, we recognize that AI's significant role in enhancing our teaching and learning experiences and is guided by our admin rule 471. And so in that rule, we ensure that the use of AI technology aligns with our district's student acceptable use policy, where we're promoting responsible and ethical usage. Next school year, we will add language to our staff acceptable use policy that will provide additional guidance for staff around AI. Our commitment, we embrace it. While many districts are denouncing and putting a pause on it, we embrace it, almost like cell phones years ago, where we were like, oh my goodness, we're all afraid of cell phones. Now, most of us cannot live without our cell phone. And we realize that AI is a tool that will help leverage and give access to many of our students. So tonight, our Director of Technology and Digital Learning, Jason Rubo, is going to walk us through our current state, the work that we're doing with our staff and our students, as well as the policies and additional information.
Hey, Beth. So just like anything, I always try to approach everything through an equity lens. And AI is really going to give our students, our staff, a lot of opportunities that they might not have had before. So, and some of the things that we've done include things like individualized learning lessons that we've done where teachers have been able to go and create lessons, modify lessons to really meet their student needs and also their interests. Another thing we've used is AI-powered translation tools, specifically a big one being Canva, with some of our things that we've sent out to the community. And then also, we've, in a lot of our professional developments we've done with staff is really encourage the, to work towards increasing that engagement with our students, you know, using AI as a way to help gamify learning and making it so opportunities like that can occur more often within the classroom. So I was really trying to find like a good model when looking at AI and one that I've always kind of gravitated back towards in my, my educational career has been the SAMR model. So I went and created this, utilizing the SAMR model. And, you know, obviously with SAMR, substitution is there, but we always strive for more. And so I, I went and created this, and as I said, while I was doing it, I always had it in the back of my head thinking about, uh, how is this going to support grade level standards and also our discipline that they receive? So you can see that, those definitions I put there for those different areas. We've had a ton of professional development opportunities this past year on AI. I was able to lead all of these different ones with my partner in crime, Rita Mortensen, who ducked out a little early because I think she knew I was going to shout her out here. And as you know, Rita Mortensen, our, I can't just say, one of our amazing tech coaches here in the district, but also the discovery educator of the year, which was very awesome to be a part of that presentation of her award. But we went, Bazzi learns, we led two AI sessions for our staff, and we had over 120 participants come to those. We've also done various after-school PDs for our staff. Me and Rita as well led a three-part webinar series for AUSA. And we also did two in-person conferences for many of our state building leaders and actually had some of our leaders as well attend both of them virtually and in person. And then we also had the opportunity to present in front of our central office leadership team as well. So supporting the use of AI to increase access in rural areas for the district. Obviously, we're always going to continue to work and not just, you know, take the hottest new AI tool and just say, yep, let's greenlight it, let's go. We're still doing all of our due diligence with data privacy agreements if they are needed, going through embedding those and, and really seeing, is this worth bringing to our staff? And so as we've done with all of our apps, you know, having that hub for our staff so they can see, these are the ones that have been embedded, these are the ones that we have data privacy agreements if needed, and then continue our professional development work, doing this through our newsletters, which now we have two in the technology department. We have our Tech Fights, which goes out twice a month. And this is on little professional development nuggets relating to things that our staff can do within their classroom. And then we also have our Gone Fishing newsletter, which is more surrounding, obviously, cybersecurity. But as AI kind of blends in with some of that cybersecurity pieces, we've included that as well in there. And another big thing that we're starting to see in the ed tech world of AI is actually AI for students and ways that we can create safe walled-in gardens, if you will, with AI. And we're utilizing this to create virtual tutors or assistants that can obviously provide support for our students both inside and outside of the classroom, but as I said, in a walled-in garden. So you could really go and streamline it and say, only answer questions about exponents. This is a sixth grade student. And if you try and deviate and say, hey, tell me this about Taylor Swift, it'll redirect you right back to the exponent conversation. So really looking at those ways that our students can utilize this tool as well, or these tools as well. And our continued commitment to building a culture of data through AI, obviously utilizing data to look at trends with our satellite data, obviously making sure that we're not attaching any identification markers to any of that data, such as like student names, grades, things like that. But then another big piece is actually our new data management system, NextPath. It actually has a thing within it called glimpses. It actually has a thing within it called glimpses, which allows us to gather some street data from our students and then actually use AI within the tool to gather information about how students might be feeling as a whole on that day. And you know, this is a great tool that we could use the same way that you might use Amazon AI review tool now at the very top, instead of scrolling through all the reviews to see about a product. We can see how is a certain group of students feeling before they take a big task and things like that. We wanted to end this conversation with a question for you all, which is given what you know about AI, are there any other ways you would like to see AI used within our district?
We don't understand AI.
Right, I know. Like, is that a question you directly want answers to? Can we share kind of within and beyond?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, yeah.
So one of the things, and I'm speaking from a place of ignorance, like, you know, like I see big shiny objects out there and I'm like, ooh, what about this? One of the things that interests me is the potential for AI programs to play a supporting role in mental health and in being available to chat with students in the moment in a secure way about whatever needs they have. And we have such a tremendous need for that. I'd be curious what tools are developed for that, if any of them are clinically proven, research-based, useful tools. I know years ago, there was something where students like picked emoticons to like.
Yeah, like five.
Yeah, how are you feeling today? But we could probably do some big data thing to actually parse out how they were feeling, not just in the moment. But like, AI seems to represent such a profound ability to be in all those places all at once that we just can't be for students sometimes. So I would think about that. I also really liked that initial quote because I really do believe that there's a strong potential to increase our students' ability to learn and be creative using AI because it renders the mundane worthless. They have to be creative in order to like produce something of value because everything else is going to be replicable. And so really kind of pursuing that line of like, how can we leverage these technologies to enhance our students' ability to think flexibly and be more creative thinkers? Yeah. So those two things, I think for me, if I'm like, what shiny objects coming? I like that those things.
Well, one thing I had that's kind of similar to what John said, and I don't know anything about AI, but I think about this a lot when there's conversations surrounding AI in schools is that it's not really a new problem. AI isn't new, it's just, it's just taken large leaps within a very short period of time. Like, I'm sure there was discussion when spell check first came around, that this is going to destroy kids' ability to spell. And you know what? It kind of did. Because we don't really need to like keep all that brain space committed to like all the spelling rules because we have Microsoft Word that'll just correct it for us. But what that does is that frees up our time and that brain space to be able to use it on more useful things. And so like, that's what I think about is like it evolving in how we teach and what we teach. And that's why I'm happy when I hear things like, we're embracing AI and trying to figure out ways to use it to benefit our students rather than just like putting up walls to stop it.
And actually, to speak on that, Joe, you know, as a grown-up, I have ADHD as a child. And I felt spell check was something that was great because I didn't have to slow down and be worried about, did I spell all these words right? Instead, I could just get things out as quickly as I possibly could and then worry about the spelling later on.
Yeah, and that's an example, right? Of where the AI is actually a learning aid rather than like a crutch.
Yep.
I had another thing, but I don't want to speak over anybody. As we're talking about that, but I just kind of forgot it. Well, we're going on, this is going to bother me.
Well, I'll probably say something, but.
No, I was just going to say, I know we're talking high school, but I'm thinking hereafter. Students that I've worked with, especially at the collegiate level, they love AI. They say that brainstorming is probably one of the most efficient tools that they've ever used to come up with ideas creatively. So, you know, they are being creative with AI. So I just don't want that perception to be there that AI takes the place of the creative process because it doesn't. It enhances it in a lot of cases.
Yeah, I mean, just to go there, because I, we're going to fight for this company and we have an AI financial coach, virtual financial coach. And there's a couple of things that I've taken away from being involved in working on that. One is AI has already penetrated every industry and has impacted almost everywhere, right? So you either use it and you're with the times and staying ahead and needing edge, or you are going to be behind. And it's going to rapidly change as you probably already know more better than I do. So it's just, how do we teach students to use it because of that fact that it's going to play a part in whatever work they do? It's already playing a part. There's AI in healthcare and, you know, assistance for doctors that are playing PA already. Engineering, I mean, every industry. So just making sure that we're incorporating how to use it already to enhance what they're doing, whether it's creatively, whether it's already in an industry, whether it's finances, engineering, or any other model. And then also just for, I think education in the industry, it's very, I think the dangers of AI is opening it up to the internet, right? Because then that's where you can't control the iterations and how it's going to bring in different pieces of information together and could be misleading, could have biases, et cetera. And so for me, it's like, one of those, how are we looking at the AI that we're using? Are they closed systems? Whereas all the information that AI is getting is just from professionals in the field, right? It's not opening up to this massive internet, you know, of possibilities. They're basically just, for example, for healthcare, it's physicians feeding in information, right? Or in financial analysis, it's finance, CFPs, experienced professionals, just making sure we're being aware of will closed-end systems exist or, you know, how can we apply that to what we're doing to avoid? And I'm sure you guys are already thinking about that.
Yeah.
But that's something I really think about because it can severely throw somebody off that's going through a difficult time if they get bad advice. Right? Same for a student, if they're trying to learn something that's critical, they're getting the wrong direction or on, you know. That, sorry. A little long-winded, but to summarize, just making sure that students are being prepared to use it in the future careers. How are we doing that? And just making sure that, that's it. I'm done.
With that piece, I, just thinking of the robust changes in technology that happened while I was teaching about like really having students be a part of this, that we're not doing this way of teaching to them. But like to your point of how are they involved in the dialogue? What moral dilemmas do they see about some of these things and really lifting up their voice with this? Because I just feel like, I mean, we're all learning this at the same time. So why would we pretend that we can tell students everything, that they're going to be just as much thought partners? I feel like with the use of all of this and just, I guess, that philosophy that I hopefully take on as educators, that we are inviting students' voices into the table on how we thoughtfully do all of this. Because I think that creativity that they already have and the way that they just navigate the moral dilemmas about all the technology they face, I think they're very, very aware of all of that. And I am excited to hear what they also have to say about some of these things.
I think bringing tools to the table is great. We also need to bring the parents to the table. I love the newsletters that you have because honestly, I am so, I think I know what I'm doing and I know nothing. And that's scary, especially when you have parents that are, you know, looking at ChatGPT and these types of, you know, tools that are going to be more and more commonly used. If parents don't understand it or don't know how to use it or don't know how to oversee a productive way of using it, there's going to be a divide in what, what help can be offered at home and just perception. Help the olds, help the olds come along with the, with the youngs.
So just really quickly, on the survey, the technology survey, that was one of the things that our parents in our community said that they wanted. You know, information on technology tools and resources. So next fall, the tech team will provide opportunities, both virtual and in person, so that we can educate our families on these kind of tools and other curriculum resources that they can use at home. So that's coming.
I was also going to reemphasize something that you put on one of the slides. The ability to translate using AI tools is absolutely amazing. Like, I was looking for something through my work, I needed to translate that, like, even six months ago. It would be hard for you to find. Now you can find like free services that will voice to text fairly common languages. And you can just sit there with your phone and like go back and forth. It is an outstanding tool for that. So, I mean, that opens up a lot. Just, you had it in there, it's a little bitty thing, but I think people really need to appreciate. Like, that is one of those areas where it can be really profound.
It has helped us significantly with our translation team. So for example, Canva, we can design a whole presentation and then you can choose the language. And so, you know, we have quite a few Spanish speakers in our district. We also have Hmong, and what happens when we have Arabic and Urdu? And so you can translate it in any language, which makes us better able to communicate with all of our families.
I appreciate it all. I feel like this is like, we get a phone and we're like trying to learn how to play Mary had a little lamb. And you're like, no, we can actually make calls. We're like, wow, that seems so advanced. I mean, yeah, how we can, I feel like I'm so far behind on this stuff, so thank you.
In future updates, I'm sure we'll have more information to answer, you know, some more of your questions that you all posed tonight. I don't want to stop the line of questioning, but I will take you all to R23.
Oh, cute.
Mr. Hank. Oh, you're like, yes. To technology flu and our monetary report.
And I think for the second conversation on our monitoring board, I'm going to have the move, have you moved to slide? For us on, for on my screen, that's number 77. Now that we're at year three of this monitoring board, the board knows the definition. So I think we'll get to the results and then I want to start there.
Absolutely. So again, the definitions you all are familiar with. We're excited to say that with this results policy, all of whom agree. I'll let Jason take you through the indicators that I have as you all have had a chance to review this.
Yeah, so with indicator one, increasing availability of inner hotspots. We've increased by 31 new hotspots requests this year. We did move over to a new hotspot and a new carrier as well, so making sure we're able to accommodate those families. Also emailing families about the FCC and the Affordable Activity Program, which obviously unfortunately, through another email I had to send out to families, was something that ended up lapsing this year. So obviously looking and seeing what other opportunities might be available straight from more of our local providers, such as TDS and Spectrum, to see what they might have in lieu of that. And making sure that we're just continuously updating our community about those.
Something just to point out, though, this number over time may go down. Not that staff, not that families won't have access, but as people now have access through their phones and other devices, the need for hotspots as it was is diminishing. So just to foreshadow this in the future.
And so with that, another reason I wanted to move to number 77, we'd like to have the board consider this as a possible workshop topic as we think about adjustments to indicators because the relevancy, we've moved away from the level of relevancy on the, certainly the hotspots for this indicator. And do some great work, Jason and other outreach teams in our community. We're having, we're starting to have a deeper impact on just the general access for families to have affordable access that's not through a hotspot, but actually through an appropriate carrier. And so just want to put this suggestion for us to possibly either change it for probably more access or remove that indicator to, in totality.
I like it. I'm in favor of modifying or getting rid of any indicator that has increase in it. Because it's like self-defeating at some point.
When I'm looking at some of those, it seems like that's more of an operational indicator. And I think for the board, we probably want to, I think, I like indicator two. Because that's, what are the results that we want schools to achieve as opposed to what hardware are we providing? Because I think MJ's need to do a great job. And I think even just things like having that gaming where it's like this pool room is packed with kids. You know, that type of stuff. How do we capture the story of what our kids are using technology? Because there's so much great stuff. And I feel like this is more, that's a bold, it's not even what the board has put out. So we probably need to review, what do, what does the board want to measure when we say consumers of education or information? Which came with AI, I did just see this, that this is the first generation that's a non-print news obtaining, you know, they're obtaining news that's not from a print source, they're obtaining from all sorts. That the ability to discern real has diminished. And I'm sure that's, not so much that they can tell, they can tell AI they can't tell what's real. Because we're heading into, how are our students able to discern information sources with so much technology? Maybe I just hung out at a retirement home for the weekend. So I mean, it was, I'm having weird. Lots of information about technology, not a lot of technological fluency. And so maybe this is kind of hitting me right at that, lots of options, so little understanding. So how are we measuring understanding of markets?
So, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
So then we have indicator two, which was increasing the percentage of students identifying and accessing digital opportunities. Obviously, we put our technology survey out once a year to students, staff, and the community. And with the results here, obviously, we ended up having over 1,500 students take the survey, which was great to see. And as you can see from here, those numbers, almost 92% of students stated that they're using technology devices every day within the classroom. And 31.5% said they had more opportunities than they had the year before. And then the 62.3% said they had about that same amount of activity. Obviously, there, as some of you have already stated, you know, we're doing a lot of amazing things when it comes to technology throughout our district. But some of the things I wanted to just highlight, we do every year, it's called the ETC project, where my, my coaches are able to see what technology needs are needed at their specific sites and kind of come together with great bands as well. And so some of the things that we've done, our elementary schools, we're adding new robotics, whether from Spiro Bolts to Ozabots. Our middle schools, one of our sites had a glow forge and one did not. So the Badger Ridge has now purchased a glow forge with their ETC project. And then the high school used it for upgrading some of their AV materials for large groups of settings with our students. And this is a plan that we are going to continue for next year as well, just because these are ways that, obviously, my, my coaches are really the boots on the ground with what's happening and, you know, every day within our schools. And so having this opportunity for them to kind of come back to me and say, this is what I think we need to move forward with, is something we're going to continue. And you can see here, how often, I just put the charts on there, obviously, if you wanted to see just the complete breakdown of those as well. And indicator three, with indicator three, this is looking at DPI's digital learning plan. And that's kind of what we wanted to have as that main focus, those five areas. And I included five questions on our technology survey that directly correlated with those five areas. And so those data charts are linked there and then they're also in the next upcoming slides as well. But some of the things we've done as well to increase those digital learning opportunities. As I stated before, our newsletters, making sure that those are going out. As I said, we have two going out three times a month now, with Tech Fights going out twice and Gone Fishing going out once. Also going through with some of the different PD opportunities that we are offering this past year. My coaches had two different topics every month around the educational technology that they hosted professional developments on, where one of them was in person and another one was virtual in case people weren't able to make the in-person one. And then obviously this past year, we had done the summer technology lunch and learn sessions, which we'll be continuing on for this summer as well. And then obviously our November 3rd PD day, which was filled with a bunch of things, not just technology, but myself and many of my coaches and a lot of people who are coaches. We're, we're hosting different lessons and professional developments for our staff on different technologies. And just being able to continue that with next year, really honing in on the incorporation of the Chromebooks and really making sure that a lot of those PDs are centered around that right at the beginning of the year. And then my last slide, you know, oh, these are, these are just the five, five charts connecting to those five areas. As you can see, you know, do you feel you can teach your students about digital citizenship, you know, many, and this is all staff, not just teachers, but all staff. 88% said yes. Going into, this is what I'm extremely proud about, you know, do you feel the information on cybersecurity and transparency shared with you from the district helps secure your digital life, both in and outside of school? Because to me, I, we can help involve those areas. 91% of the staff said yes. And this kind of shows with our vision campaign. And this kind of shows with our fishing campaign, in two years, we've gone from fifty percent fish rate, which was the campaign that occurred right before I started, to now we are down to twelve percent. Last year we were at twenty two percent. So this, along with some of the other big changes that we've made, that when I told districts that we moved to sixteen character passwords, I had a lot of tech directors ask, how did you do that? And I think it's the approach that we took and really talking to our staff about security and protecting yourself in your professional digital life. I think makes it so that the staff is okay with that little bit less, or that inconvenience, knowing that they're a little bit more protected.
Well, that's significant too. Wasn't there a district in Wisconsin that has cyber ransom attack?
Yeah, yeah. Janesville.
Yeah, yeah. So like that's, that, that could have a significant impact on the district, so it's, that's terrific. That's really great.
Adequate amount of technology professional developments, you can see kind of those percentages there. And then co-cabinet managing classroom students utilizing technology. Are they feeling like the professional developments that we are giving are helping in those areas? And then lastly, we want them also to create their own professional learning goals. And, you know, have we allowed them that feeling that they feel like they can create some of those goals surrounding technology? Yeah, it's, it's good to always see this and get this feedback from the staff, just because, you know, obviously we could talk to them and see these things, but having it kind of hard numbers, it's good for us to see that what we did this year was good and how do we make it better for next year?
So lastly, what considerations, or what additional considerations or perspectives would you like to see or hear more of when we present again to provide another update on, we're around AI and being technologically fluent?
One thing that jumps immediately to mind to me is the transition from iPad to Chromebooks. Being able to support parents in helping support their students, especially for those youngest students that maybe have only ever used iPads or iPhones in terms of devices. And suddenly transitioning to a different operating system might be hard for them or their parents to navigate with.
And I think that's where our technology mindset, we're kind of in the infancy stage of planning right now. We have kind of topics we'd like to provide, but I think, I mean, that's on our list of things we want to make sure that our parents know about. Also, obviously, besides like power school LMS systems, you know, our Google Guardian, with our management system for classroom management, in ways that parents can also utilize that at home.
So, and this is just a broader comment that implicates us as a board as well. As I'm reading through this, so much of it does seem like what Meredith said, operational in nature, and that we were kind of focused on the technological access component and not necessarily the fluency. I think we've got to do some work, workshopping to think about how, how we want to articulate, what does it mean to be technologically fluent? You know, in terms of like sorting out what's real from what's been faked and things like that, discerning, you know, proper sources and appropriate uses for technology amongst all our students. I think that that's, that's really important. Some of this stuff I absolutely love around asking teachers and that how they're thinking about the classroom and use of technology in the classroom. I see that being an area that we're going to want to bring into our conversation around AI. I am curious about on slide eighty seven, the confident managing a classroom where students are using technology. When that question was asked, we imagine that to include teachers thinking about having to manage students that are on their phones, doing non-classroom things. Because I know in the past, we've really kind of struggled with making sure that our teachers feel supported in those instances where students are on their phones and not necessarily being compliant. And so would this be an indication that we are doing a better job of supporting our teachers in that role? Or is this question actually geared towards something else entirely where they're not really thinking about that when they answer this question? Does that all make sense?
Yeah. I guess it, I don't think it's geared to discern one way or the other.
Okay.
I think obviously with the survey that we're going to put out, that's always something that we can modify to, because that's, I mean, that's a great point, right? If, if students are utilizing some of their, their, their software or other technologies that they're, they're bringing to the classroom. You know, are, are the teachers competent in managing that, knowing that this device that most might be using to help them educationally, there are ways that you could also use it to get very on task.
Yeah, so I think, I think for us maybe also thinking about like, we're talking about learning how to appropriately use technology and technological tools. But also like, what does that mean in the context of like some of the life skills development? Like, you know, how are they self-limiting? How are they learning to be self-disciplined about those things? And how are we supporting teachers to create those, you know, self-disciplining environments? So it's less a question for you guys, more just throwing it out there, something I think we need some workshopping around in technological fluency in our end, so.
To speak on that one thing we are currently doing, obviously when it comes to like digital citizenship, in the past, a lot of it has been done by a lot of my coaches. But obviously in different realms of, you know, common sense media, when they have those different pillars regarding digital citizenship, a lot of those areas are ones that we can really utilize other roles within the district as well. So just last week, we actually met with T-Boss and Kurt team with ways that they can help regarding the digital citizenship piece. And then we're actually looking at other as well, that it's not just a thing that we're talking about once and then it's done. It's something that's brought into the conversation, like, hey, we're, we're talking about bullying. Well, let's make sure that we include silent bullying into those conversations. And so making sure it's something that occurs more naturally and more often.
To Jones, just thank you for bringing this up, because those are the two things I wanted to talk about. Do we currently measure, have any way of measuring how students are progressing as digital citizens? Are they getting better at discerning what's fact or fiction? Are we measuring, you know, if they're falling for scams? Because I know YouTube's a slippery slope where they can find all different types of things and pop-ups that are saying, send this to your friends twenty times, it's one hundred bucks. Is there any way that we're tracking how they're reacting to that and getting better about not falling for things, just as teachers and men have been up against a lot of phishing scams and students as well? Tracking that they're learning how to not kind of fall down that slippery slope, because it's so important.
Yeah.
So as adults, they don't make the same mistake.
Yeah, I think that was a little tricky here to measure, because we're simultaneously blocking as much of it as possible.
So maybe a closed environment to test them.
Yes. Our best strategy right now is denying access, which is with the team. So, yeah, to your point, are you falling for this, send me thirty rubies, you know? Twenty year ago scam, I, I don't know that I would know how to measure that. While simultaneously protecting our students by blocking them, by blocking the information.
And protecting your system.
Or is it, or is it worth testing them in some way, shape or form that doesn't expose them to, right?
Well, and this could be like the workshop topic is kind of what I'm hearing, right? Is like looking back at what the actual results policy says and the key word now being results, right? In terms of what is happening for our learners, I think now that we've been doing this for a while, you know, in my opinion, two of the three indicators are much more procedural. And I think this becomes a great, really interesting space when you parallel this with our AI discussion.
Right, right. So the curiosity is just, are we doing anything to monitor, which will feed into our conversation too?
So I think for the sake of time, if you all are okay, because I think the brainstorming has started and we still have lofty agenda ahead. Knowing that we're going to take this results policy and we will be though taking what's been presented to talk about reasonable progress, that we're not going to think in terms of like our wish list at this point. Is that something we want to do to close out, so you all don't presumably have to stay for the rest of the evening? Do we want to shift this then to close out and take board action on this results policy?
I say yes.
Okay, just because I know, right, we impact admin team folks by doing that. Okay, all right, so I need my notes. All right, so we've gotten our report, we've had a chance to ask some questions. So the members of the board have received and we've discussed superintendent's monitoring report or, I'm sorry, results policy for technology, R dot two, dot three. I'll now accept a motion to accept and approve the report as presented, so we can just take out any additional board discussion on reasonable progress. Is there a motion? Thank you, Meredith. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. The board can now discuss this monitoring report, any other discussion that we want to take about monitoring report R dot two, dot three in terms of reasonable progress having been made before we take a vote.
I think if the metrics given, they don't have fantastic.
Which again, I think is important to identify, right? That with the indicators we've been presented and the evidence as presented, we will now take our official vote. So reiterating again, there's a motion and a second to approve the report as presented, which is noted as achieving reasonable progress. All those in favor of approving this report as reasonable progress signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. The report has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think this is just a great example of how the board needs to, that would be, just kind of in track of which, what we should, you know.
Yeah, policy is really thick when you read it, right? They're talking about the impacts on students, so.
There's so much great work is happening.
So just for, we'll transition to OE twelve, release as many members of my team as possible. Rochelle, have a good night. Tamara, good night. Dr. Hawkins, Jason.
Sorry, Nate.
All right, for OE, our next presentation would be OE twelve. For the purposes of OE twelve, much likely in results, the board is very familiar with OE twelve and definition, purpose and scope. What I would like to bring your attention to, especially as was written in the executive summary, was one area we went yellow, because we wanted some deeper discussion about intent. And then in the, in the indicator, before we're marking it one way or another, so if we could take our eyes and have the team start there. And I didn't even introduce them, I'm getting rude, sorry. John Brimmer and Jay Weezy, that, that, that would join us, so thank you for that.
All right, Dr. C, we, we almost tripped on the short straw we drew on the way up here to get to present slides ninety through one forty. So we will be succinct. So, Dr. C, do you want to hop right to the yellow and then we can go back? Or do we highlight that when we get there?
I'll do it.
Okay, and now we'll go back and we can, we can go over this in relatively quick order. So what Dr. Clarity wanted to pull our attention to was our one yellow checkmark, which talks about presenting alternatives to the school board in the event of projects that we sent to you that are over two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And for, I think, example sake tonight, one pretty good one might be the Savannah Oaks HVAC project. Where John is doing this over two years because of budgetary confines, to change out much of the equipment at Savannah Oaks that has reached its useful end of life. And in, in the meantime, we are swapping out much of the equipment for more efficient equipment, smarter equipment. But did not go down the road with the school board of giving you the option of installing a full geothermal field at Savannah Oaks. We had roughly a million dollar budget that we broke up over a couple of years. We sent it through consent and we gave ourselves the yellow checkmark there, because I believe the way this is written is that we're supposed to talk through alternatives that may exist for the project that's going to have a long capital life. And we're committed to, to adding that detail through the consent process. And quite frankly, I, I think there should be times that if we have a major capital expense, even giving the board and the community a three-minute update, potentially either by pulling it out of consent or adding it to the superintendent's report, so you know what we're up to, is probably good. That's where we ended up with the yellow checkmark to essentially get feedback from the board. I do believe that that's the intent of this policy, that if we're making a major capital investment, we look at all angles in terms of return on investment and potential efficiencies related to that purchase. Questions, thoughts on that? Another example, and then now let's talk, certainly give us some feedback, Jen. We're going to replace the windows at Sugar Creek. And John has spent almost a year going through different window options for a building regarding life expectancy, operability and efficiency. Will include more detail for the board to know that we did our homework.
Okay, my initial thought is, as it's in the moment, it feels like more timely, less once a year-ish, where these documents are less robust, because we're getting the updates in the moment. To the point of, you know, as we've been kind of discussing, I think there's boards that for a lot of OEs, they don't spend much time discussing them, because they've been ongoing throughout the year. We are doing our due diligence of looking through evidence that, however, we streamline this in a way that isn't taking away from the work that we are meant to be doing as board members. But also I think just shares updates to us and to the community in ways that make more sense, other than waiting for these sort of end of year moments that don't always feel appropriate. I don't, that's just my sentiment.
I may be saying something similar or completely different. We'll see how this goes. I can envision a world where there's some sort of like capital improvement form that lists out the reasonable alternatives. And I say reasonable, because it would be unreasonable to say, sure, there are alternatives to this HVAC process that could be like a full geothermal field or something. That might not be a reasonable thing to do. But so say we've got a form that's got reasonable alternatives, anytime you guys are, you know, spending two hundred fifty thousand dollars or above, we get a presentation on like, here's a reasonable alternative throughout the year. I can see that being in discussion, because we might want to discuss that. But then at the end of the year, we get to this, and I can see this OE report then being in the consent. So it's kind of like a flipped thing, because it's just green and yellow checkmarks. But there isn't a whole lot to discuss if they're all green checkmarks. You know, and if we've gone through all year, then like, tell us about these windows. Well, they're five to ten, I'd stop telling us about the windows, we're just going to vote on it, because there's too many windows. You see what I'm saying? So I, I think I'm saying something different, that I would kind of flip that a little bit maybe.
I think we should use consent as just a general, so like these things get lost.
And I'm not saying that it should belong there, I'm just saying, like needing to spend once a year a giant discussion on things that have been kind of more ongoing. You know, just right, how do we hit that sweet spot of, yeah, so I, I do not want to misconstrue, but I do not think these should be consented, because that's our work, right? That's our government's work.
I think that, you know, I think just having a quick, you know, put it on the agenda, we have just notice of it and that's it. I mean, you know, I think consent is just like the routine stuff that we wouldn't, like we have discussion. Yeah. And I think we were getting more substantive stuff in consent, I'm kind of worried about.
So what I'm saying is the substantive stuff. So for me, it's backwards to say, okay, the approval for this capital expense happens in consent. And then we have this discussion about the end of your report. To me, that's backwards. We have the discussions about the, all the approvals throughout the year. And then the report at the end of the year is less consequential, because we've been discussing it. We've done, we've done the board's work all year, so I agree with you.
Yeah.
But.
I'm agreeing with you too.
Oh, good. We'll just leave it at that. Yeah, okay. I, I'm not sure if I was agreeing earlier.
So I'm sure I heard the direct.
Because I don't see you two being fully in agreement.
So items that are over two hundred fifty thousand, you want automatically not in consent?
Yeah, I think our consent agenda is getting more substantive. We're just like, just, let's just, I mean, if, if there's a memo for it, we can have a, just put it on the agenda so we can, you know, identify it. Otherwise, I think it gets lost. And then we're, you know, there's no reason for it not to be an agenda item. Just to touch on, it doesn't need to be more of a robust presentation, other than, did everyone read the memo? It kind of keeps it highlighted and it's not.
Is that what you're suggesting, Chad?
Yeah, so that's, that's kind of where I started off. And there, I think there is, this is sliding scale. I don't think the board is going to be super interested in an in-depth discussion around the roofing membrane that John picked to redo part of the roof at New Century.
Right, because then that's not far.
You might be a little more interested in the windows, which are falling apart at Sugar Creek, more than anything for, because the, the staff and the community will be excited to know we're doing it. And there could be a scale that there could be other things that the board is just much more interested in terms of the purchase. I'll give you the example, Jason's purchase of the Chromebooks, could have been put in consent and it wasn't, he pulled it out. could have been put in consent and it wasn't, we pulled it out. So Jason can walk you through the entire implementation plan. And I think there's, who knows, a security project that the board might have more discussion about that we wouldn't just put in consent. So I think we're on the same page, especially items that there are viable alternatives we want the board to respect on, that we would, we'd bring for some more discussion.
So, so to make sure I understand what we're proposing, is any of this two hundred fifty thousand plus? Or the aggregate of a year long implementation will be two fifty thousand plus will be out of the consent agenda for a quick little summary?
Which is our standard, and that's our threshold anyway.
Yeah, that's our threshold.
Is that what you're saying?
Well, is that what I was? I guess my recommendation is certainly push this back to Jen and Dr. Clarity. I, I think Jen and the board set the agenda every two weeks. And I think we can preemptively say, Dr. C, this is a bigger purchase. I think we should actually add it in the superintendent's report and not in the consent agenda. And have an eye for that. And I also think, you know, Dr. Clarity can go through and say, this, we don't need board discussion on a three hundred thousand dollar roof job. I'm going to talk to Jod and see if we can put that in consent. And they may decide to do that. Otherwise, there might be things sitting in consent that we're like, let's talk about this more. And I think in closing, it is always the board's option to hold things up for discussion.
Yes.
So I think we, I think we kind of covered it on all bases.
Right. You don't have to guess because there's all these other checks and balances that we have to as board members that, you know, yeah.
I mean, I just want to add.
I was a little confused, I'm sorry.
I want to add my two cents. I kind of don't feel like spending two hundred fifty plus thousand dollars is ever, should ever be treated so routine that it's handled by consent. I think even if there's no discussion necessary because we're all on the same page or there's no viable alternatives, just in terms of like community transparency, I think we should have that be a board action item. And I don't think it'll take a lot of time, but that's just my, how I view it.
And it's rare, guys, you know, it's something, it's ten times a year. It is not at the most, so it's not like it happens all the time.
I agree, okay.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Perfect.
So that was a reason for the pivot. I think that was, we were kind of stuck on which way to go there.
Okay. So, Dr. Clarity, I think we can be very concise with the remainder of our agenda. Our, the main new bits of items, John's going to give a little update on buildings and grounds, the team and how the year's gone. I think we can, in relatively short order, go through many of the other agendas. We wanted to remind the board, we did a full-scale facility study last year. It is not just practice to bring in a team of architects and engineers every year to reassess your facilities. But I would say probably two years from now, we will probably back at this work again. John's going to give you a preview of where we're headed with some projects down the road to prove to the board. We are planning more than six months ahead. In fact, we're planning years ahead. The enrollment, role study, and long-range considerations are reviewed. And we do not have spent a lot of time on those. More than anything, it's to get them in the public eye once a year when we talk about facilities. And then we've got OE twelve, and the main thing we pulled out, we just talked about. So with that, Mr. Brummer, just a quick update on how things are going on the world of buildings and grounds.
So, yeah, staffing is in a great place. We've finally reached full staff. I was just talking with Katie the other day, and she's thinking, this is the first time in about six years we've been able to achieve that. So we are just steadfast in trying to find the best people we can. And then with that, and with our staff, training is always ongoing. So I feel like we're in a great spot, ready to do our tasks that make our buildings shiny, which is, it's really fun to see. Noting, we're hosting a statewide possible conference here, July tenth. People are excited to come down. I was just at the conference in Wisconsin Dells last week, and several people are like, hey, I'm coming. We're really excited to see your campus. I'm like, fantastic. So using that to leverage opportunities for our staff. I was able to ask somebody that I saw present at Wisconsin Dells. I'm like, can you come and present that to my staff? And he's like, absolutely. I'm like, thank you. So leveraging this day for multiple opportunities for our staff as well.
And it is exciting. So we will have a statewide training here. Lots of John's counterparts coming from around the state to kick the tires on this new high school. It's pretty cool. And an honor to kind of be asked by the statewide organization to do it. I did, just want to kind of re-ground the board, and these are the things I will go through in relative quick order. Again, OE calls around making sure we are planful around having high-quality safety facilities. And we proved to the board with a very large bit of evidence that this work is ongoing on an annual basis. That's the big idea behind it. These are valuable assets. Keep them safe and maintain them and have a plan to do it. That's the, the main thing OE calls about. So this is again, just a reminder that we had a report done in two thousand fifteen and sixteen. We updated it in two thousand and twenty-three last year. It is on our website. We will refer back to it again and again, but we will not re-up this report in partnerships with architects on an annual basis. We'll just refer to the work that happened to it in OE twelve. Key findings that in general, EWA would say our district is well above average in terms of both the condition of our facilities and the planning that has gone into maintaining them. And it's, the fact that we levy a million dollars on an annual basis to maintain these assets is, is unique in some regards. And I'm sure John hears that with his counterparts at the state. It's still, I don't know, and there's still a reason in some regards we go back to referendum for larger projects. But we are able to do the right amount of kind of proactive maintenance work that many other school districts aren't. Where you have failing roofs that are, that are leaking onto all of the instructional materials and you're fixing things right and left, and we're in a good spot as far as that goes. We did want to go through and just show the board. John has a spreadsheet that will break the internet if we shared the entire thing with all of you. This is a screenshot from John's, the rollup page relative to the work that we did last year. And John's team updates this on a project-by-project basis in terms of where we're at around the district with facilities. And you can see the number on there does exceed the one million dollars, one and a half million dollars John has on an annual basis to maintain facilities. But that's kind of par for the course. You will see a larger deferred maintenance list than you ever have a budget for, or you just build everything new every year. And it's John's job and his team's job to make sure that we're taking on the things that have the biggest return on investment, lowest AP risks, and have the greatest need first. John, if you want to just give us a quick recap on what we're doing and where we're going.
Yeah, so last year, we took care of our final secured entries. So those projects are to completion. So I think that's a note. And just coming from that report and based on what is needed, you can see a variety of different things that we addressed throughout the year last year.
Badger Park Lot was way overdue, and I was like, yeah.
So this is moving forward to this summer, replacing that Kaling roof. I think it's been on the list for probably a decade. And we're able to, you know, we did a lot of work with that, like, in terms of like showing you the options. Like, I think I went, I did three different bid processes on that before we finally arrived at what we thought was going to be the best spend in terms of getting value back out of the project over the length of that roof. So that's one, that's one that is off-the-ground, it's ready to get, we just had our kickoff meeting last week for that. Santa Oaks is another one that I'll highlight. We've gotten great use out of the equipment that is original in that building, and it's given us an opportunity to incorporate some of the new technologies that may incorporate in this building to capture heat, specifically when you are taking, when you're exhausting air out of the building and taking in. We're using heat recovering wheels to recover heat before we just go outside and transfer it to air that is coming inside, which is an efficiency that we take for granted for this building, but that's not always the case when we are looking at older, older buildings. Now, looking ahead, you can see that Savannah Oaks' equipment, the upgrades update, that's a two-year project. I'm going to keep on pecking away at doors at Badger Bridge. We have steadily been able to replace two or three or four per year, making my way around the building. And then.
I'd say this one's a moving target, but it does prove to the board we have a decent general plan a few years out. All right, the rest of this is review. And it is, again, was me to make sure it ended up on permanent record for another year from the board. These are the capacity projections that Mark Roffers did last year. School districts do not re-up these every single year. I think likely this time next year, we probably would engage Mark Roffers again to re-up these numbers. Part of the reason is, we also have our hand on the throttle as a school board, where we're watching how many students are in seats and also toggling what's going on with open enrollment. So we have kind of throttled back new students just a little bit, but we're also seeing the housing growth continue in the school district, and the growth will continue, just like we reported to the school board last year. So the main thing I wanted to highlight again is that we project that by two thousand thirty, our elementary schools will be tight. We will start to fill out classrooms. We had a really big class, it's a kindergarteners at Stoner last year. We are projecting a bumper crop at Country View this year. And you really don't know until they show up. And it will be interesting to kind of see what happens with these kindergarten classes as, and then you've got it for five years once you run them out. So that's definitely something for the school board and our team to keep an eye on relative to growth projections. Our middle school and our high school both have a little more wiggle room, but we will likely be talking about a new elementary school within, you know, at the minimum, I'm thinking something that we're cutting a ribbon at by the time we get to two thousand thirty. Reminder to the school board, if we are talking elementary schools specifically, we worked with all of you last year to kind of outline a south and then kind of easterly swath that we believe will be some elementary school along that swath to the south and to the, then northeast side of our school district will be areas we can target and all the considerations we went through last year.
So just to reiterate that for the community, that all those slides you just kind of breezed through, we had an entire meeting section where we engaged in conversation, dialogue about all those slides. You could maybe reference that if someone would need that, but just to reiterate that we did not just gloss over this as a board, that this is review.
One hundred percent, yep. Any other questions on that? Okay. OE twelve, to Dr. Clarity's point, I think, in many regards, this should be a very routine OE. We are using industry-best standards to maintain these facilities. John has an amazing team. We believe the evidence we provided to the school board shows that we're in compliance of this policy. We are certainly willing to have discussions about any subsection of OE twelve. But Dr. Clarity, I don't think, it's nine o'clock at night, I don't think it benefits the board for us to go through each and each member of one of these subsections of the policy.
No, this was the board had on Thursday. And so anything that, and again, thanks, thank you for indulging me with moving to immediate discussion on the yellow check because that, that was an area for our team where we just didn't know which way to go and wanted to make sure we were in alignment with the board's desires and the community's desires. Other than that area, we'll open to any questions on any of the areas that we marked completely green.
Questions from the board? Yeah. Appreciate your time, though, John, and those kind of projections of the next few-year projects. I think that's just super helpful, kind of to elevate in addition to all of this, so thank you.
John, this is absolutely amazing work, and we're lucky to have that.
Absolutely.
And I love the looking to efficiency. I love things that create a break-even opportunity, but obviously, that's asking a lot, but it's great to be able to repurpose and think smarter with a new building. This is awesome.
Always. Happy to introduce you to any of those because that's always on their mind. Doesn't matter what we're doing.
Cool.
Always on their mind. And that's, it's been a tradition for longer for me. So it's a great legacy thing that I think you'll always enjoy.
Well, John's son took the first at the regional track meet tonight in the Mile. He's already been and gone at the back. I think you should probably be on your way and go give your son a hug.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That's true.
I'll be in bed.
Do you know his time?
Yeah, four, four twenty-eight.
Wow.
Yeah.
Oh, he's, he's the first one.
Nobody erased John.
It's amazing.
Yeah.
Wow.
That's incredible. Awesome helping light, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, Mr. Brummer.
My, I'm just, my jaw's gaping open. I'm not even sure what I'm supposed to say next. Okay. Any other questions? We can then do the same kind of process we did with our results policy and move this into board discussion officially. So members of the board have received and discussed the superintendent's monitoring report for OE twelve. Again, I'll accept a motion to accept and approve the report as presented so we can begin any additional discussion. Is there a motion? Thank you, Meredith, second.
Second.
Thank you, Juan Carlos. Any other further discussion around OE twelve?
No, I'm ready to head to time, there's a lot of stuff there, but yeah.
Which, again, we highlight to the community, right? That we have access to all the evidence, all the links. Everything is there for full transparency to us and others. Okay. So there's a motion in a second to approve the report as presented. All those in favor of doing so signify with aye. Aye. Same sign. All those opposed, same sign. Report has been approved as presented. Thank you.
You're still stuck with me?
Yes.
Thank you. So item G on the superintendent's report is information relative to integrity gravel and excavating, I T E for short. They will be attached specifically after, just after the presentation to items D E M F potentially, depending on the direction of the, of the board. An overview before chat, but this is directly tied to the very space that we are in in our, in our, in our high school. As we know, with any construction project, there, there's the immediate and then there's things that you learn along, along the way that we will bring to discussion today. So, Chad?
Thanks, Dr. Clarity. One of, in some regards, one of the biggest gifts that Dr. Clarity, myself, and many of the newer members of our administrative team were given on the way into the district was this building that was really just being opened up as Dr. Clarity took over. And a piece of a large-scale commercial project like this, a construction project, is you end up with loose ends. And to the credit of our builders and the designers of this building, there weren't that many left that came in parade on as we opened up the building. One of the things that I was kind of presented with on my transition plan into the school district was kind of a pending dispute regarding a failed roadway, West End Court, that's on the north side of our high school, ended up having to be redone. And I'm going to walk the board through a timeline. And in the end, we finally got to a resolution relative to redoing that road, essentially doing it twice, just this past month. And we're bringing it to the school board for, or hope for approval to button up that portion of the project. There are other loose ends that the board may eventually hear about. We have a few seams giving way on a roofing section here. And we're, we're doing our due diligence with the contractor that installed it that's been on the roof. due diligence with the contractor that installed it, that's been on the roof a number of times, and eventually may end up in a spot that we ask them to redo a portion of their work. And on occasion, you can come up with people saying, I think one way and you think another, and it ends up in a form of a dispute like the one we're going to talk about and talk through today. So in 2019, the, the original paving project was done on the north side of the school, and that failed and had to be redone. And the district at the time thought it was the contractor's fault, integrity, gravel and engineering, grading and engineering, and ended up in a dispute over who should have to pay for it. And that happened all the way back in January of 21. And at that time, we believed that I G E should pay for it, and they believed you should pay us to do it again. And that's the essence of what happened in terms of this dispute. And that kind of sat in the courts for the last three and a half years. And we've had developments more recently where a judge dismissed V A S D's original claim that started in, in January of 2021. So years ago, we initially made this claim and sent us in mediation. And we went into mediation really around the cost of redoing the road, the road that's now in great shape and we're driving on every day, and was done right the second time it was done. And that's what we're bringing to the board this evening. So I'm certainly available to answer questions, but in some regards, we could, I'd like to think that we're almost to the end of any loose ends related to $150 million, very successful commercial construction project. But here it is for questions from the board.
Just to clarify, this is just we're paying for it that's already been completed, and we just approved a, agreed upon amount that that work was worth.
That is very fair to say. I want to emphasize something Chad said earlier, which is like, this is normal in the course of large-scale commercial construction projects, that you end up with some details where you're fighting over who's responsible, and sometimes you initiate litigation to let a court jump in and resolve it. And what this output is here is, we're actually paying a premium less than what the contractor thought that they, you know, should have been paid for it in resolution of the dispute. So I actually think this is something that's good for the district and is, you know, saving some money on a construction project.
And just to your point about the timeline, that the dispute over this kind of concurring was happening before this leadership team was here, and just given the duration of kind of the back and forth, that's why it's landing on us with this team and this board this many years later, is just kind of the behind the scenes back and forth about this discussion and debate, that the timeline seems so interesting, right, of 2019 and you're paying this bill now, but yeah.
All the way to, yes, here we are in May of 2024, but Jen, you're right. I mean, it was, it was tied up in all of the checkboxes that you go through regarding a dispute when a decent sum of money is on the table. You know, when you compare it to $150 million, it, it's a, it's a small portion of this large project, but we've reached it and that Dr. Clarity and I participated in mediation, and we are comfortable recommending that this is the direction we recommend the school board signs off on tonight in terms of paying that is worked on appropriately, and we're getting to utilize the road they built on a daily basis.
And all the work that you and your team has done to get caught up to things that kind of came to you as you and your team arrived and being able to just understand, I'm sure, a lot of information behind the scenes also of how...
It won't be nice to have this behind us.
Yeah.
That's a good way to summarize it.
So I'm here to answer more questions. This will mean a additional budget transfer to make our budget. Essentially, our budget is still balanced. This just makes our budget more accurate in terms of the budget lines and where we, where we charge this. So I sent the details to the board. I did want to make sure the board knew that we still have a $1.4 million surplus budget for the year, and that's even before we close the books out, when we usually do have a little bit of unspent revenue at the end of the year. So we're still in very sound shape to do this. I actually feel quite fortunate that all of the, all of these one-time expenses we've had all year landed on the right year for us budget-wise. We were able to approve 4.12 this evening, but also made two really important curricular purchases already this year. We're closing out the high school project that finished on time and under budget, and we still have a surplus budget to ramp up this fiscal year.
So to your point, Chad, that means, as you all can see on slide 137, we will actually take three votes in order to close this piece out because of the nature of the budget transfer, actually agreeing with the settlement and then making the payments.
We will.
Any additional questions from board members?
No, I think it's important to note that like, this is something we've all been briefed on and talked about leading up to this, so we're very familiar with it.
And Jen, we've included the results of the mediation agreement and publicly available.
Oh, right. Thank you for that note.
The board has been briefed on this.
Yes, thank you for that. Okay. If there's no further questions, I think we'll, ready to close the superintendent's report, and we can finish up our board business, then board action on those pieces.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, so I'm going to go in the order with which they are listed on that slide, assuming that is the logical order. So if you're reading with me perhaps on slide 137, I would accept a motion to approve the fiscal year '24 proposed budget transfer amendment as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Joe, second.
Second.
Thank you, Meredith. All those in favor of approving the proposed budget transfer signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the proposed budget transfer is approved. I would take a motion to approve the settlement agreement as presented by leadership.
So moved.
Thank you. John, second.
Second.
Thank you, Joe. All those in favor of approving the settlement agreement as presented signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Settlement agreement has been approved. Lori, are you doing okay back there? Okay, trying to pace up all of us here. And then finally, I'd take a motion to approve the settlement payment as listed in the information as presented.
So moved.
We'll take that from Joe, second.
So moved.
John?
Second.
Okay, Joe, first, second. John, all those in favor of approving the settlement payment as presented signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The settlement payment has been approved. Thank you all, team, and all the board action. Subscribing down our agenda, any other general updates from the board regarding communications?
I got to spend a day last Wednesday, last Wednesday?
That's what it was.
Last Wednesday in Sun Prairie for a governance conference that aligns with our particular focus on governance as a board and our relationship with the district and how we do things. It was a fantastic opportunity to see some other districts that are interested in the same type of work and to have some speakers come in, present their ideas around this work. There's one speaker in particular that talked about leadership at the board and administrative level in the morning. It was quite well done. And yeah, it's, it's nice to see that Madison's following us for a change, too. But it was very enjoyable, a good day, learned a lot, at least a couple of good ideas. And when we workshop, I'll be fucking in your ears as much as I can.
Thank you for taking the time to attend. I wanted to hear more about what y'all learned.
Was that the same conference on a panel specifically about being a person of color on a board of a predominantly non-person of color governed school district? And it was, it was excellent. It was an excellent panel. Me, myself, and Michelle Nichols, and I'm paying from, was it Appleton?
Yep.
Appleton School District, just giving our, our insights and points of view. Also, Paris was amazing. Talked about, now the world knows about Verona. Thirty-five different countries are asking about what our equity framework looks like, how it operates, how it was conceived, how we implement it, how they can copy it in various parts of the world, which has led to Germany, school district in Germany is asking me to come there and explain to them what we did here.
That's cool.
Wow.
World travel.
It was incredible. The, the feedback and comments about our equity framework was, was very moving.
Inspiring to hear that globally conversations around equity and education. That's really exciting.
And I told Dr. Clarity, I said, what I realized from that conference, it's not specific to the, to the U.S. The equity for marginalized communities regarding education, it's a global phenomenon.
Thank you for sharing, and super exciting that we get to hear updates about all that you were involved in. Yeah, thanks for being a part of the panel, too. Love hearing all the ways that, again, we're all kind of out in spaces and then bringing all that back to the support table, super valuable. Thank you. Anything else under general board updates? Okay, any public comment tonight? All right, just making sure. We'll move on to superintendent's consent agenda. Please look over the consent agenda.
Jen, Mia?
Yes.
Just very quickly on item C, just one, as I know the board has been able, you heard our V A E A investment membership, but we very intentionally know that handbook conversation is not part of bargaining, so they're very intentionally teased apart. But we all know that our handbook language is important to the sense of value, trust, and partnership that we have, so we put it in superintendent's agenda instead of having a part of that conversation. That makes sense.
Any other questions on items in the superintendent's consent agenda? Okay, my language here. Hearing on them, the superintendent's consent agenda is approved as presented. Board consent agenda, are there any questions?
I do have a question on item C on there.
Yes.
It's identified on the agenda as administrator contract provision amendment. I'm not sure I understand, looking at this, what it is we're looking at, what if this is an amendment, what if it is existing terms? It just isn't clear in looking, what I'm looking at.
So as a formality, do we need to move that if we're going to have discussion out of consent?
Or personally, we can just pull it from consent?
Okay, so Joe, are you officially pulling that?
Sure.
Consent, great. Okay, thank you. Just making sure I'm following protocols, which is something that I've not had to facilitate, so thank you.
Joe, thank you for pulling the item consent for deeper discussion. And as a reminder, we'll, when we put the document in for future reference, we'll make sure to formal copy redline, so it's an easier, easier read from there. But Rochelle, if you could do a quick update on, it ties, it ties to our calendar that was approved by the Board of Education specifically for Good Friday. We moved it for our staff, for the calendar, to a workday, but the administrative contract still had it as a date off, so we wouldn't have had administrators.
Yeah.
So we...
Now that you say that, I remember you mentioning that. So that's the only change that was made?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
That is the only change.
Maybe Rochelle walk up here for nothing.
Well, because I mean, I laughed just the whole evening anyways.
No, it's good, it's good conversation.
Just, again, the document had like the entirety with no obvious places for where changes had happened, so...
I thought that Good Friday was crossed off on that one page where it talks about holidays, so if it's not, I apologize for that.
Yeah, but it, yeah, it'd be one line out of a huge document.
It is not.
Yeah, so we will make that adjust. But yeah, that's what we're, otherwise be able to have administrators technically not working on the day that the school was supposed to be in school. We want, we want to make sure we're here.
What it does is it moves it from the Good Friday to a floating holiday, so they're not losing a holiday, it is just their responsibility of when they can take it, knowing that they can't take it on the day that everyone else is in school.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that. Yeah, so now we are, yeah, thank you. So now we're going to do a formal vote on approval because we pulled. Any additional questions? So now I'll take a motion to approve the board consent agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Thank you, John. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Corby. All those in favor of approving the board consent agenda as presented signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Board consent agenda is approved.
Do we want to do the administrative contracts? Is that what we pulled in consent or we put it back? The contract provision, did we pull it from consent?
So that has to get voted on specifically.
So we don't actually have to pull in the consent agenda. Did have to draw on that.
Yeah. Got it. So I need to reframe the motion and start again. Thank you for the support. So is there a motion to approve the administrative, I want to get my language, I'm sorry, I'm in eighteen spots now, to approve the administrator contract provision amendment as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Meredith. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. All those in favor of approving the administrator contract provision amendment signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The contract provision amendment is approved. Thank you. Future agenda items, I think the only thing to just highlight, make sure you've done R S V Ps to Lori, right? We've been getting information about graduations, so just staying on top of invites from Lori and sharing information about graduations specifically. Wonderful. Okay. Then is there a motion to adjourn to closed session under state statute 19.85 sub 1 sub E to deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session regarding potential purchasing of property?
So moved.
Thank you, John. Is there a second?
Second.
We'll take a roll call vote to move into closed session. Joe?
Aye.
Corby?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Juan Carlos?
Aye.
And I am a as well. We are officially in closed session.